I'd like to call up the January 30th, 2018, meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. Do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Call the row, please. Councilmember Friedman. Councilmember Dominguez.
Here.
Mayor Pretim Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
Councilmembers Sneddon.
Here.
And Mayor Maria. Here. Very good. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Very good. And we have public comment. Pete Dalbello, I see your hat back there. And you have two minutes from Michael Miranda and from Jose Gallegos. Come on up. You have six minutes.
Yes. Okay. Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Pete Dalbello, and I'm a Santa Barbara native. I'm also a property owner in Districts 1 and 4. I'm in a good mood today for many reasons, both personally and professionally, so, you know, I won't be, no complaints, won't get angry, so I know you're, everybody's in shock. I'm in shock for even saying that. But I'm going to discuss a couple of things today. The Flying A Studios is so interesting that I'm also going to be talking about it next week as well, at the public comment at the next city council meeting. But first, it always amazes me how many people watch these meetings online in Channel 18. And I know you must, people must recognize you folks all the time, because, you know, when they recognize me, I'm always surprised. And I would say 90% of it is positive, so. I've always said that smart people like me, so. But Monday afternoon was the first time someone who's not old enough to vote approached me, and this was at Chaucer's Bookstore, to talk to me about the city. And I was so happy that someone that young is so interested in what is going on, and it was one of the highlights of my day. It turns out she's only 10 years old, and her name is Melody, and I, of course, I remember that, even more so because I asked her if her parents were disc jockeys. So, but she had two questions, and I think I gave her the right answers. I know I met, I said, she watches the council meetings with her mother online. And she asked about the youth council, and I said, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Mayor, because I know you're active with the youth, I think it's wonderful, that you have to be, I think, high school age, is that correct?
There's a junior high category, too.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't know that. I didn't know that. Thank you. And then she also asked, and I told her, because she said, I only see adults speaking at public comment. So I said, well, people of all ages can speak at public comment, and then naturally, it's earlier in the day, so it's cool, and, but, I said, because, you know, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's a right, the freedom of speech, and just like it's a privilege to drive here, it's a right to speak here. And like I told her, that it's the taxpayer that paid for this microphone. So, so I actually invited her, I said, when there's no school, give me a call. And if you come here, we come here early, I give you a tour of City Hall, and introduce her to some of these important people, you know, I know the mayor and council, and, you know, other important people, including Mr. Casey, City Administrator Paul Casey. And I told her that, believe it or not, Mr. Casey is even better looking than I am. And, and I was surprised she recognized me, because I wasn't dressed like this, I was just t-shirt, jeans, and, and none of this stuff, you know. And, and she said, she came up to me, and she said, are you Pete Dalbello? And I said, yes. And she said, you know, you look better with the hat on. So, so maybe that's, maybe that's, she's telling me something. I don't know. But as we all know, I'm going to mention about the Flying A Studios, especially with the Film Festival starting tomorrow. And, and I can mention that the next meeting will be Part 2 of the Flying A, because we were Hollywood before there was Hollywood, so I always suggest that the Film Festival kind of mention that, because that's a good marketing angle. And between 1910 and 1921, the American Film Company was one of the fledging movie industry's most successful studios, with production facilities in Santa Barbara and business offices in Chicago. Nickname for its distinctive winged A logo. It produced nearly 1,200 films. Americans Western Company moved from La Mesa, which is near San Diego, to Santa Barbara in July of 1912. And over the coming years, the entire producing arm of the company would work in Santa Barbara, although corporate headquarters and the printing laboratory would remain in Chicago. Within a year, the permanent studios had begun operations in the block between State and Chapala Streets at the Mission, State, I'm sorry, State and Chapala Streets at Mission Street. A small portion of that studio still exists today. Actually, I took a picture, and I always take pictures of things, not people, because then things can't move, and then I look like a better photographer. This is the corner of Mission and Chapala. And, so, and the Flying A was one of the biggest employers in town, and the studio was making a film a day at its peak. And naturally, they, their location with our scenic possibilities is one of the main reasons they chose Santa Barbara. And as I mentioned, next, at the next meeting, I will tell you a little bit more, as well as mention some of the famous actors and directors that worked at the Flying A. Thank you for your time and kind attention.
Thanks. Bob Hanson is next, followed by Nancy McCready, Jacqueline Enda, Lanny Ebenstein, John de Herrera, and then Michael Baker. So, come on up, Bob Hanson. And thanks, Mr. Dalbello, for reminding us that the Film Festival starts tomorrow. So, take a look at The Independent, there's some good films and activities.
Yeah, the Film Festival's tomorrow, and they're playing a movie called The Public. It's about a community back east where there's a snowstorm, and the homeless, unhoused homeless people are in there. And basically, they're told they have to leave, and they said, we're not going out in that snowstorm. So basically, they had to sit in, and that's what the movie's about. So I'm going to be there tomorrow, handing out my flyers, telling people, you know, Santa Barbara's the same way. We've had the Armory as a winter shelter before. People are playing volleyball inside, homeless people are standing outside in the rain. And it's like, can't they just go in off the side? Oh, no, they can't do that. So that's been happening, that was many years ago. But even now, with a Freedom Warming Center, you come in at 6 o'clock, they're told to leave at 6 o'clock, it could be raining outside, you got to go out. So there's some injustices happening, if there's injustice anywhere, there's a threat to justice everywhere. And we know what's happening in our country right now, it's pretty crazy. And I got a minute left, but Paul could sit there, it's a discretion of the mayor, I could have maybe just a little bit more time, but I don't think so.
Yeah, one minute, go ahead.
I don't, because this morning, I asked Doss the same thing, it's a discretion of the chair, and, you know, Robert rules of order, so, you know, he said, no, no, so anyway. So I have a flyer here, I made like thousands of them, I'm going to hand them out, I have a big sign telling people that we had no sitting law, and it was just a tool for the police. Why? For the unhoused homeless, unhoused American citizens, Santa Barbara citizens. The no sleeping law, that was overturned, so now the police write a ticket called, it's a state law, illegal lodging. No sleeping, you know, illegal lodging, but it's not a sleeping ticket, so. And then there's the no parking, citywide, there were signs up, that was overturned. So now, you know, you have to have a vehicle that's under 25 foot, 80 inches wide, can't be over that, and, I got some, a couple of seconds, okay. Just a little bit more. And in general, you know, the safe parking program's great, but where do you park during the day? That's the problem.
Thanks, Mr. Hanson.
It's a no-brainer, and I didn't go too much over it.
Nancy, come on up.
And I'm sorry, Randy. The mayor said I should apologize to you and apologize.
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. I came up to talk about something that bothers me. I have a friend, his name is Tony. He's schizophrenic. He's one of the lucky ones that got into housing. I'm worried because he lives in fear. He listens to the computers in his head, the angels in his head, and sometimes believes he's President of the United States. And he tells us about the things that he would do if he was. But the manager of the place where he's at is constantly writing him about, did you clean your floor? Did you do this? Did you do that? And the man is pretty ill. And he lives in fear of being thrown out back out on the streets again, because he only has one more mistake that if he makes, he's gone out of his housing. One was a dirty bathroom floor, and one was a bad one, where he brought a girl home with him one day. So he's only got one left, and he's scared. I have a friend named Jackie. She's bipolar. And she was kicked out of her housing because the management in her apartment didn't understand the disease, and the, and instead of calling an intervention to help her stay in her apartment, he threw her out. And now she's running the streets scared to death, not knowing where to go or where to turn. So these are the things that bother me, because we are supposed to have supportive housing. And when we don't have supportive housing, it doesn't work to house the mentally ill. So I just wanted to bring that up, and just talk about it, and let you know how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCready. Jacqueline Enda, come on up. Mr. Ebenstein, you'll be next. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'd first like to thank you for the opportunity of having a special election and calling for that in June. You've done an honorable thing by the West Side, and we appreciate that. We want to let you know that in partnership of that, we will be out in the community, allowing people to understand what it means to have that power and use the voting rights to vote. We won't be endorsing a candidate, but we will definitely be helping that community understand that there is a special election, so you're not out there alone trying to get the special election rolling and people informed about it. I'm here to also remind you that there is a clause in the state standards that says that you have to call for the special election no less than 114 days. And so I just want to remind Council that that means that we should probably get something in a consent calendar in the next council agenda. So we appreciate your efforts, and we hope to continue to work with the city in getting the vote out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ebenstein, followed by John de Herrera.
Mayor Maria, members of the council, thank you for your service to our community. I would like to echo the comments that Jacqueline Enda just made to you, and thank you again for your vote last week. I know it was a difficult decision, but I believe that the council made the right decision, and it's good. I think that there was diversity and a strong discussion among the council on this issue. I think that the council as a whole well-represented your constituents in your vote. And I think that the West Side will benefit from a special election, and I think that that is the most democratic course. I would also like to bring to the council's attention, the matter of when you call for the election is very important. Per state law, the election has to be more than 114 days, let me say it right, it has to be more than 114 days from when you call it, so that the 114th day is before the June election is February 9th, or something like that. So you would really, to be on the safe side, have to call the election at your February 6th meeting, your next meeting, in order to meet that provision. If you tried to call it on the 13th, then it would only be 111 days, or something like that, or 110 days, you might have to hold it then in November, or some later period of time. So I would encourage you to direct your staff members, your city administrator and your city attorney, to determine whether, at what point in time that should be brought before you, perhaps at the next meeting, in order to enable you to call the meeting in, the election in June. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I think our city attorney has a comment.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I corresponded with Judge Ochoa late last night and again this morning to assure him that Ms. Gorman and I are working on having it ready for the 6th. The deadline's actually the 11th, but obviously, that's not a meeting date for you.
Thank you. We'll return to public comment. Go ahead.
How much time do I got?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. You guys probably know where Gray Avenue is, down there next to the railroad tracks. Shaw Hoop just put in a new place, really nice eatery down there. I have a little art space down there, and through the last couple of weekends, I noticed, just by chance, I can look up the way through a couple of buildings, and I can see the Arlington Spire and the Granada Theater, too. And so I just started thinking that that spire is basically this, you know, tall cylinder of painted cement. And, and so I know, but I know that that's, the spire is very prominent in the city and stuff. So the idea just occurred to me, gosh, you know, what if we, what if we tiled that spire with like some kind of iridescent reflective glass, or abalone, or something, there's a number of ways to approach it, but if we tiled that portion of cement, you know, over a number of years, it'd become a nice little touch to the city that would, people would be used to, and, you know, anywhere you are in the city, you know, you might see a nice, you know, little reflection of light off the spire. So I don't know, you know, you know, the process for all that and everything, but just a local artist had an idea and took the shuttle up here, and so just want to put that to you.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, you're our last speaker today.
Mr. Baker's my dad, you know that. First of all, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs. I just wanted to drop off a report for each of you. Okay, can I have that here? This is our impact report for our organization, and I wanted to do a special thank you to Councilmember Hart for coming to our gold, our blue card ceremony, annual meeting this past week. It was very, very well attended, and meant a lot to have you there. And it meant just as much, if not more, having our city manager, city administrator, Paul Casey, attend as well. I want to, want to thank you for your continued support, and encourage each and every one of you that have not been to the clubs recently, please come on down, take a tour. We're doing a lot of great things for those kids every single day, and I encourage you to come down and see it. Thank you.
Thank you. The consent calendar, we have some items to read. Thank you.
Item 2, adoption of ordinance to correct budget manager increase. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending ordinance number 5823, the 2017 through 2019 Management Salary Plan with regard to the Budget Manager position. Item 3, adoption of ordinance establishing speed limits on Cliff Drive between Los Pecitas Road and the Westerly City Limits. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Chapter 10.60 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by revising Section 10.60.015, and establishing a prima facie speed limit on Cliff Drive between Los Pecitas Road and the Westerly City Limits. Item 4, approval of required state documents to implement new 1% transactions and use tax. Recommendation that council, A, approve the agreement for preparation to administer and operate city's transactions and use ordinance; B, approve the agreement for state administration of city transactions and use taxes; C, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the examination of transactions, sales, and use tax records; and D, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the Finance Director to execute agreements with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of a local transactions and use tax. Item 5, resolution regarding grant application requirements for the Alameda Well Water Supply Reliability Project. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing submittal of a grant application under the Federal Bureau of Reclamation Fiscal Year 2018, Water Smart Drought Resiliency Projects Grant Program. And finally, item 8, TFRA, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, hearing for 510 North Salsi Puertes, Jardine de las Rosas Apartments, debt reiss, debt reissuance. The recommendation is that council hold a public hearing and adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the reissuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, originally issued for the acquisition and construction of a multifamily rental apartment project for the benefit of Jardine de la Rosas LP.
Any council members want to pull an item, Ms. Sneddon?
I'd like to pull item 7, just for a comment.
7, okay. Any others, Mr., Mr., no, you're good? Same one, okay. Would you kindly read number 7?
Certainly, the subject is Santa Barbara Swim Club Funds for Water Quality Improvements at Los Panyas Del Mar.
Very good. Ms. Sneddon, go ahead.
I would just really like to thank and acknowledge the Santa Barbara Swim Club for making that donation, and I think it's a great resource for our city and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing. Thank you for bringing it up, Councilmember Sneddon. It's a tremendous gift from the swim club. It improves swimming for everybody in the area. They've donated $35,000 to improve the water quality at the Los Panyas Pool, and we've had a great partnership with them for many years, and we're very appreciative and grateful for their donation, so thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hart. We have a public comment on item number 4, which you already read. Ms. Raisin, can you come on up? Bonnie Raisin, there she is. Thanks. You have two minutes.
Yeah, I would, Bonnie Raisin, I had hoped to hear a presentation from either Public Works or whoever, you know, it's regarding the tax increase, and this is what I'm understanding, the measure passed by the voters, is that what we're talking about on this?
That's right. This is a procedural item. I know we're having a presentation from, the presentation that you're looking for.
That's my mistake, I got the wrong number. I mean, I don't know, when, when is that?
Mr. Casey, when would that be?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Ms. Raisin, I think the item you're looking for is in a couple weeks, we're coming back with a more detailed presentation and plan of work and talking about the committee that would need to be appointed. This is just a technical nature that we need to notify the state of the passage of the measure. I think you're looking for the item that's coming in a couple of weeks.
My apologies.
No, we're glad you're here. And the public comment period is now open for item 8, and that was read into the record. Was anyone here on that item and wanted to be heard? No? Okay, well, we have minutes as one of our consent items, and some of the new council members weren't here. So can I have, let's do a motion for the minutes from someone who was here.
Move approval of the minutes.
And that's, that's moved by Hart and seconded by Rouse. And, so you should just abstain, obviously. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? And two abstentions. Is that good? Okay, very good. And do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, again, Hart and Rouse. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. That looks unanimous, so thank you. All right, next item.
Excuse me. Item number 10, Andre Clark Bird Refuge Restoration Project.
Okay, and staff is coming up. Thank you very much. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Cameron Benson, and I am the Cities Creeks Division Manager. I'm here today to provide you with a presentation on the Andre Clark Bird Refuge Restoration Project, and some various alternatives that we have been looking at. Just, just to start off, to orient you, the Andre Clark Bird Refuge is on the eastern end of the city, southeastern edge, near East Beach. It's an 817-acre watershed. The, the park itself is a 42-acre open space park with the main feature being a 32-acre Historically, the Bird Refuge was a shallow salt marsh. It was connected at one time to Sycamore Creek via coastal lagoon on East Beach, and then around to the, to the lake itself. It was subject to tidal influence, and then there was some dune habitat on the beachside of Cabrillo Boulevard. Over time, there have been a number of modifications to, to that system, and I'll just walk through some of those. First of all, as you can see here, this is Sycamore Creek coming down across the beach in the coastal lagoon here, and was connected, so there was a freshwater source to, to the Bird Refuge. In the late 1920s, the city installed a weir, or a dam, on the Bird Refuge, right on the upstream side of Cabrillo Boulevard. Then the city also did some dredging in the Bird Refuge, and the intent was to create an open water lake and also open water bird habitat. And Sycamore Creek was then modified and straightened to go directly out to the ocean. So these are aerial photos sort of before and after those, those changes were made, and you can see the islands appear in the Bird Refuge, those are the dredge spoils from when the, when it was dredged out. And you can also see the changes on the beach here, the, the dune habitat sort of disappeared, and, as well as the lagoon on the beach. So almost immediately after the, the dredging and the weir went in, the city started to have problems with odors. I mean, we had a, essentially had a stagnant pond there. So here are the, here's a quote from the minutes of the Park Commission meeting on July 13th, 1933, and it refers to he, that's the superintendent, the park superintendent explained the work that had been done to eliminate the odor existing at the present time in the Bird Refuge. And so they had, they had started trying to take some measures to deal with odor issues down at the Bird Refuge even way back then. So the existing conditions at the Bird Refuge, it's a very shallow pond. It's, it's anywhere from 2 to 5 feet deep. On average, it's about 3 feet deep when it's filled to the top of the weir. And one of the things that's unique about the Bird Refuge now is there's very limited flushing. It doesn't connect to the ocean anymore because of that dam, and so there's just, the water just sort of sits in there and stagnates. It also has very high nutrient loads coming into it. And, and those three conditions cause water quality problems, so there's, there's very low dissolved oxygen, we have lots of algae blooms, we have periodic odor events, sometimes very strong odor events, and we've also have marginalized bird and aquatic habitat. So the Creeks Division has been working towards a project, and the goals of that project would be to decrease those odor events, or eliminate them if we could, improve water quality, improve the bird and aquatic habitat, improve aesthetics, maintain flood protection, also maintain the passive recreational uses we have in the park, and do so in a cost-effective Over the last couple of years, we've looked at a number of restoration alternatives for the Bird Refuge, and that includes dredging, filling, flushing, probiotics, adding supplemental water, and hydrologic restoration. And we came up with a number of alternatives that look at various combinations of those, of those things as a way to try to meet our project objectives. We, we presented a range of alternatives to, to City Council back in October of 2016, and we're asked to move forward looking at three of those alternatives. The first one is, is sort of a status quo alternative. What happens if we, if we do nothing? And, and continue our current management of the Bird Refuge? And if we do that, I think we'd expect to see continued poor water quality, continued degraded habitat. And we also see continued degraded habitat, and we also see continued sediment deposition. So over time, the Bird Refuge is essentially filling with sediment. On the other side, the benefit of doing nothing is we have no additional cost to the city compared to what we're spending to maintain the facility now. The second alternative was pretty simple. It had a couple of important elements. The first is to remove the weir and the weir gate here, and then also to restore dune habitat on the beach. And the dune habitat restoration not only provides additional habitat improvements, but it also serves to narrow the outlet channel from the Bird Refuge across the beach and into the ocean, which would allow that channel to remain open longer and allow some additional flushing during storms and during high tide events. Implementing this alternative will, we think, increase the frequency of the flushing and the extent of the flushing. It is important for the council to note, and the public to note, that this alternative, we no longer have the dam in place, so we're subject to the sand berm keeping water in or letting water out of the Bird Refuge, so we will have periods with low or very little water in the Bird Refuge. And under this alternative, we would continue to have the sediment deposition coming in from higher up in the watershed. I'm sorry, the engineer's estimate of the cost of implementing alternative two would be approximately $1 million. The third alternative includes the elements of alternative two, in other words, the removal of the weir and the dune restoration, but also includes some additional elements. The first of which, down on the beach, would be to mechanically open the ocean outfall, and that would be periodic openings to allow for the flushing to occur. This alternative also includes dredging and filling of portions of the lake. So where you see this kind of track going around here, this would be a dredged area that would increase the depth of the water in that area, and then the dredge spoils would be used in different portions of the lake, which at some times would create less surface area in the lake, so we would not have such high temperatures, we'd not have such a large surface area where we would have as much input to the odor problem. And then in this area, there's a couple of features that the dredging would allow. One of them is a low-flow water quality improvement feature, so we have a constant input of really low flow into the Bird Refuge up around this area, and this would be sort of a vegetated swale, a low-flow channel where we could get some treatment and usage of some of the nutrients before that water gets into the larger pond and causing algae blooms. And the other part of using the fill like this was it allowed for the potential for a loop trail, so a very popular multi-use path that goes along around the Bird Refuge here and ends down here right now, and we looked at the possibility of having a loop trail that went all the way around through there. Again, we think that this alternative would help increase the frequency of the flushing. We'd still have those periodic times with low water, no water in the lake, but we do think it would increase the water depth for the water that's there, and it would improve habitat for birds because this would allow us to create a range of different habitat for different types of birds. The engineer's estimate for alternative three was approximately $7 million. The dredging is very expensive. So once our, working with our engineers, once we developed and researched those three alternatives, we brought them out to, for public review. We met with a lot of the neighbors, we met with a lot of stakeholder groups and people who had expressed interest in the Bird Refuge. We held public notice community meetings over the summer last year, and then after those meetings, we completed the conceptual design plans, and we had site visit with the Creeks Advisory Committee, we made a presentation to Parks and Recreation Commission, and we met last month with the Council Sustainability Committee. After receiving input from the public and from those committees and commissions, the staff developed a hybrid alternative, and it really brings in elements of alternative two and alternative three together, and at least some of the concepts from those. And I just wanted to walk through this hybrid alternative because this is what we're recommending as the next step for the city. So starting down on the beachside and moving forward, there's five elements to the proposal. The first is to see if we can permit the periodic mechanical opening or breaching of the sand berm on East Beach. The second element is to do the dune restoration on the beach. Third element is, rather than simply remove the weir completely, we would install a new movable weir gate, which would allow us to open and close that weir effectively, and we can, that provides us maximum flexibility for management of the facility. And then we're recommending to improve the trail. This is an existing trail right now, but right now it serves as a service road. We would need some kind of trail that could still provide that for maintenance of the facility, but we think there's a lot of room for improvement for this trail, which would allow much greater use than what we see now. And then finally, we like that water quality treatment element to remove the nutrients, but rather than fill this portion of the Bird Refuge and use that area, we found a location up on the municipal tennis court property where there's an existing drainage culvert that we could utilize as the vegetated swale, and it gets the same water, so we'd be able to treat that there. We could remove the vegetation once it's utilized the nutrients, and we can manage the nutrient inputs during low flows that way. And so those are the elements of the hybrid alternative. Our estimated cost on this is approximately $2 million. So that recommendation came from our stakeholder input, looking at our cost-effectiveness, what our maintenance requirements were, the feasibility of permitting something at the Bird Refuge, I'll talk a little more about that in a minute, that would provide habitat improvements, but also had a few elements that council had been interested in before, which are the ability to have this adaptive management approach as we're going forward, and we kind of see what happens as we take these incremental or this phased approach to try and improve things down there. And by doing so, it gives us flexibility and even reversibility. So if we're moving forward and it doesn't meet the goals the way we think it's going to, we're able to kind of restore ourselves to status quo while we figure out what our next steps are going to be. This is an extremely sensitive area. It's in the coastal zone, it's a wetland, there are threatened and endangered species that utilize the Bird Refuge. There are historic resources, so we're looking at an incredibly complex and significant permitting process moving forward with a project in this area. So as you can see here, I don't need to name them all, but we have six state and federal agencies that we need to get permits from in addition to permits from the city. So our anticipated timeline, if we move forward today, these dates are dates that I expect all of these things to be completed. So we would have our technical design studies completed by the end of next year. We'll have our permitting and environmental review completed by June of 2020. We'll be out with our final, well, final design, our construction bid will go out January of 2021, and then we would have our construction in the second half of 2021. And with that, I'll conclude. I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any comments. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks. Well, I'll start with a question that the Sustainability Committee looked at eight alternatives, and then we had narrowed it down to three, and that was because of those reasons that you had listed that, right? Some things just cost way too much, or they wouldn't have been approved by the regulatory agencies, but the driving factor then was to relieve the odor. I know that's what we heard from the community, even though now you see all these other factors, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sat on the Sustainable Committee with the mayor and the other mayor, and I'm very impressed with staff's diligence on this and bringing us a big menu of alternatives to try to solve this problem. And it is something that was a natural feature that became a rather unnatural feature, and that we're going to do our best to bring it back to some kind of sustainability in terms of natural ebb and flow. And I think that, wouldn't you agree, Mr. Benson, that the flushing, the ability for ocean flushing is probably our best way to keep and maintain quality in terms of aquatic life, of odor, of appearance, or all the above?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, that's right. I mean, that's a very significant part of trying to restore some of the ecology of the Bird Refuge and also reduce the opportunities for those significant odor events.
Yeah, because I would put forth that we've got a petri dish there now, and that we're actually having probably adverse species effects as opposed to something that would be more natural, more sustainable for a normal, natural wetland. I think also, from the aesthetic point and from the community point, it is one of the first things you see if you ride by road or by rail, and you have the zoo right next to it, and it is part of our local treasure that really shouldn't be squandered. So the expense is significant, but I think it's very much worthwhile, and you guys have been very good about leveraging funds in the past for projects, so I have a lot of faith in that. And then about the openings and the permits, I know how problematic that is as far as breaching to the ocean, but I think vector control was a factor in our ability to breach out in the airport because of the problems with bugs and mosquitoes and birds and airplanes. And I would think that vector control would be, and I saw that was one of your stakeholders, so that would be an issue here with an odd, that same idea where stagnant water is going to only exacerbate a problem.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rose, yeah, vector control's an issue at the Bird Refuge, and like you said, they're one of our partners that we consult with on this project. And whether or not restoring this flushing is going to solve the vector control issues, may not solve them, but I think it would help.
And then my last question is, does the restoration of the dune area cause any diminution of recreational area that we have today?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, the intent of the restoration and the way it's mapped out there is not to have any effect on the existing volleyball courts that are there, or there is beach access along there as well. We've done some observation down there. Generally, what we see is people go along the outside of that area, and so we would probably continue that as the main access rather than right across the center of it, but we'd maintain that access for sure.
Thank you.
Questions, Ms. Sneddon, and then Mr. Hart?
Thank you. I think this is a really excellent project, it's been a long time coming, and I really appreciate all of the reconsiderations with all the different stakeholders. I had a couple questions about the hybrid option. Just one about, is there any dredging at all in that model?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, no dredging, excuse me.
Okay. And then the other question is more about the periodic opening of the ocean outfall. Who does that, and how much does it cost each time it's done? And will that look sort of similar to Hendry's Beach, that, like a little bit of water coming out or related to that outflow? Larger, smaller, what it might look like?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, the frequency and the timing of the breaching would be subject to the permits, what we're allowed to do. What would it look like? I think in terms of the flow and what's coming out, it depends on what the volume of water is that's in the Bird Refuge and whether we have a significant rain event coming, for example. So we do have some flooding issues on Cabrillo Boulevard with the Bird Refuge because the sand berm acts as the gateway. So one of the things we might look at is being able to lower the elevation of the sand berm height before a rainstorm is coming in. It wouldn't necessarily mean going out and using an excavator or something to actually breach it. You're bringing the elevation down so that when, as the water surface elevation of the Bird Refuge comes up, it's going to breach on its own and open up. In terms of equipment, you could be looking at anything from people with shovels to excavator out there to move sand, and again, that partly depends on permitting, but also depends on safety of people who are doing that work.
Good. Mr. Hart?
So if I understand this right, the flushing is just to take the water that's in the Bird Refuge and get it to the ocean. There's no way to have high tide put water back into the Bird Refuge, is there?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, it's both ways. So when we have a very high tide, we can get the tidal influence back into the Bird Refuge, and it can also get the brackish water out, so it can go both ways. I should note that the culverts under Cabrillo are a significant limiting factor, both on the elevation of the water and the volume of water that can move in and out. So if we have a very high tide and that's open, the sizing of those culverts and the number of culverts won't let all the water in. You know, you don't have this just nice neat direct flow in or out, it's a pinch point to get under there. And then the elevation of them won't allow lower tides to provide water, and neither will they let all of the water drain out.
So how often is the tide high enough to activate those culverts as they are now?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, for those details, I'm going to invite our Creeks Division Supervisor, George Johnson. He's got a better memory than I have.
I don't need to know precisely. Just, you know, kind of order of magnitude.
We did ask engineers to look at that and measure it as precisely as we could get it, though.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, it's about 22% to 24% of the time, so that's 66% of the days. So it's anything about, I think over a four-foot tide could flow into there, but again, it may only be there for a half hour, an hour, when it's open. So, and then the tide starts dropping, and then no more water's going to flow in there. So it's not going to be a lot, but it can happen, and when you're higher tides and larger swells, you can get quite a bit of water going in, even though the pipes are limiting that flow rate.
And then in looking at the hybrid alternatives, did you cost out, you know, expanding those culverts and making that a more viable source of water? And what would be the incremental cost of that addition as a different hybrid?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we did think about that and consider it, replacing, it's probably not replacing the culverts, it's probably replacing the entire road structure there, so we would build a bridge, and it would be a natural bottom bridge area. It starts to get complicated because of Coastal Commission's sea level rise-related issues, and we didn't know how far we would have to chase the road in either direction to get the elevation high enough to meet the projections on sea level rise, because we're really at a low elevation there. So we estimated, you know... So, we estimated, you know, doing the bridge replacement there would be, it would be in the several million, millions of dollars range. We also had a structural engineer look at the condition of the current bridge, and we had our public works engineers look at that as well. And all the engineers that looked at it said the bridge is in good shape. It's not in a condition right now that we would need to go in, because we were looking, hey, if we're working on this and it's something that needs to happen in the next five years, then we should try to figure out how to get it done. But there was no indication that it was going to need to be replaced in a period of time like that.
So, really, what you're looking for us is just direction at this point. Conceptually, you're going to do the technical studies, you're going to work with all the permitting agencies and figure out exactly where the balance is, is whether this is effectively going to work, given permitting restrictions from the other agencies, and then see where we are at a future point into December of 2019.
That's right. Yes.
Thank you.
Good questions. Okay, Mr. Friedman and then Mr. Dominguez.
Well, I just want to thank you for this project. I appreciate the level of outreach you did in working with the community there and coming to a good consensus project. When you mentioned that the no alternative project would have no cost, but there are other costs that we would incur, such as a loss of economic activity when we have these bad events, because you can, when you're driving into Santa Barbara, when they're really bad, that whole area, including the zoo and the businesses that are there. So, we would have economic losses if we did nothing. And then I also, into the zoo as well. So, I'll be supporting this project and look forward to it. Most of the questions I had, you addressed, the sea level rise and whether the saltwater can get in. So, with that, I would just want to thank you for this project.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez, go ahead.
So, a couple of questions. The hybrid alternative, what are the chances that this is going to cure the problem? What's the probability?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, that's, you know, that's the $2 million question, really. You know, we have our project goals, and we're trying to, as efficiently as possible, aim towards those. But the, you know, the honest answer is, I can't give you a probability. I don't know that. We think that this would reduce the frequency of those odor events, and we think that it would reduce the intensity of the odor events. And I think that's the best I can do.
What is the science behind this, I guess, hope?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, Jill Murray is our Water Quality Research Coordinator, and I'm going to ask her to respond to that question.
Thanks. Ms. Murray, go ahead.
There is some science behind it. We know that there's two different kinds of odors. We have the hydrogen sulfide, the rotten egg smell that comes when there's no dissolved oxygen left. Often, in many situations, that happens down in the sediment, but we know at the Bird Refuge, it's happening all the way to the surface of the water. Then there's the odors that are more garlicky or fish smell that are from cyanobacteria blooms, also called blue-green algae blooms. So, for the rotten egg smell, if we, the residence time plays a significant role in predicting the frequency of those events. And right now, the residence time of the water in there is almost infinity. So, by just having a shorter time that it's there, we know that we're going to decrease odor events. Also, the less volume of water that has the microbes that are producing the hydrogen sulfide, the less total amount of hydrogen sulfide that's going into the atmosphere. So, that helps me understand or predict that there will be less intense events. Again, we can't put numbers on that. For the blue-green algae blooms, we'll probably still have some of those in the summer when we get kind of ponded areas. But again, the surface area will be smaller, so probably less total algae, and the depth will be smaller. So, when we have those blooms that go all the way through the water column, just less water means less noxious odors produced and that are allowed to travel.
So, the volume of the body of water is huge and sounds like everything. Is there something we've studied in terms of how much water we need or the shape of the water in order to maximize the number of birds? Or what is the goal with the birds? It's the Bird Refuge. Is that really the number-one concern? Or is it the aesthetic quality in terms of it being a park and the entryway?
Well, as Mr. Benson mentioned, we've got multiple goals. I'll just speak to the water quality side, and then I'll hand it over. But we know that to have a healthy functioning ecosystem, we've got to have more dissolved oxygen in the Bird Refuge more regularly, and that's partly going to happen from increasing the flushing. There are so many nutrients locked into those sediments that, right now, even when the wind blows, I think it stirs up and releases some of the phosphates that just basically stay there forever. And so, for, to increase dissolved oxygen, which will then allow more fish and zooplanctins to flourish, that will provide prey and food for some of the birds. But I'm going to pass over, pass along to Mr. Johnson, the bird habitat.
Well, to stay with the water quality, so the goal is that the water from the beach or from the creek will replenish the lake or be, what did you use, residence time?
Yes.
Is that the technical term you said?
Yeah, there was, there have been studies that show that one of the strongest predictors of another technical term, eutrophication, which is the over-enrichment of nutrients and the decrease in dissolved oxygen. One of the strongest predictors of that in estuaries up and down the California coast is how long the water stays before it mixes, which is called the residence time. And I think we don't have exact predictions of how much resupply of water will come from the tidal input versus low flow and storm runoff.
How about some loose predictions?
Well, I can tell you every time, if the weir is up, or if the movable weir is up, or the berm is built, once we've had a couple of rainstorms, so the ground is relatively saturated, we get about a foot of elevation gain in the water every inch of rain.
And is that from the watershed, from the, I think it was 800 acres of watershed?
Yeah.
So, that's unrelated to all the sand we're going to be moving around?
Exactly.
So, tell me about, how much water are we going to get from the beach, from moving the dunes and opening the weir?
We don't have volume predictions, volumetric predictions for that. And partly, it's because we don't know, we know when we can move up and down a movable weir, but we don't know how often the sand berm is going to open. When the sand berm opens, even, we could have the weir open, but we could still have the flushing closed off due to the sand berm. And I don't think any engineer is going to be able to give us exact predictions of how often that's going to be open.
Do we know how often it's open in the past, say, 10 years?
Very rarely because of the weir, and it's the head pressure of the entire estuary that controls a lot of how often that weir, how often the sand berm breaks open.
So, what I'm trying to find out is why I should spend $2 million to do all this moving around if it can be between 0 to 100% chance that this is going to open once or twice in a year? And then we don't even know what the volume is going to be pushing through there. Is it 100 gallons? Is it 100 acre feet? What are we talking about if we do get the right conditions? Will half the lake be recharged?
The lake will recharge really quickly if the berm is open and we have stormwater runoff.
What about from the beach, though? Because what I'm hearing, maybe I'm misunderstanding, isn't most of the money being spent on the beach side?
Well, the rainwater cannot flush out with that weir there. I mean, right now, it overtops the weir every now and then, but it'll change, the height of the open space changes by, I think, four feet once we take the weir out, right, between the weir compared to the bottom of those culverts. So, storm runoff will go right through there.
Okay. So, it'll essentially bring a bunch of water into the lake, and then a bunch of it will rinse out?
Mm-hmm.
And is there a minimum amount of stormwater? What was the inch number you gave me?
It raises about a foot, about a foot per inch of rain.
So, would we have to have a minimum of an inch? Or if we add a quarter inch in November and another quarter in February, would that do the trick?
No. We need some big storm, bigger storms to fill it.
Okay. Thank you. And then...
But, and one of your questions was about how the opening will affect bird habitat, and that we really have thought a lot about.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, all of those things, the water quality and the bird habitat are quite obviously very connected to each other. And restoring the water quality or improving the water quality improves the aquatic habitat, which also improves the habitat for birds. And one of the things that we are looking at is habitat for different types of bird species. So, one of the things we've seen recently, if you've noticed the Bird Refuge over the last month or so, it's been very, very dry out there. We have seen different species of birds utilizing the Bird Refuge. So, you have, you know, you have your open water bird species, you have shorebirds, you have all these different types of birds utilizing the facility. And we want to try to accommodate the greatest, the highest numbers and the greatest species diversity as we can. It is a bird refuge. It's one of the kind of named goals for the facility. And so, that's a high priority, but it's not something that we look at apart from the water quality improvement.
And did Anchor QEA, the consultant that we've used in the past, did they have a recommendation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, they didn't make any specific recommendations. We definitely used them as a sounding board, not only through the process of looking at the alternatives that were created, but when we were getting feedback from the community and trying to develop what the best path forward was in making a recommendation, we definitely consulted with them on that.
And have we worked with UCSB and any of their marine biology departments or environmental brand school?
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, we have consulted a little bit with a woman named Lisa Stratton, who manages the lagoon at UCSB. She's weighed in on, I think, weighed in on things. When the Bird Refuge has gone through microbiological extremes, like turning pink, turning different colors, I have reached out to UCSB and haven't gotten anyone that's really ready to jump into this project on just a pure scientific curiosity-type project.
So, they haven't weighed in on any of the alternatives in front of us?
Not specifically, maybe as part of the Audubon.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Is there any public comment? I don't see any speaker slips. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I would make a motion to drug staff to initiate final design and permitting of the hybrid design alternative. And my understanding is that really what is controlling in this is the permitting agencies that you're going to be working through. We have ideas, we have hopes and aspirations, but the regulatory agencies also have their missions, and that that will, to a great extent, constrain what you can do. And we don't know that until you advance the technical studies and get ready for that. But this is not authorizing expenditure of those $2 million. That will be a subsequent action at a future date. This is just to continue the process and move forward and get the information necessary to have the permitting process continue. So, I think that should reassure everybody that we'll have answers to a lot of the questions people are asking in the future.
Is there a second to Mr. Hart's motion?
All second.
Ms. Sneddon, thank you. Mr. Dominguez, you have your light on. Discussion to the motion?
So, I would float an alternate, but it doesn't seem like I'm going to get any support. And I would say, unless there's, and I would ask, is there any harm to waiting another year and doing a little more study and maybe bringing in a little more science to bolster our probability here? Is it going to get any worse, first of all?
There's always the possibility we could have the most extreme stink event yet.
Most extreme what?
Stink event yet. I can't think of any studies that we need to, I can't think of any data gaps that we need to fill in order to, that would help us put better bounds on some of the numbers that you're asking for.
And right now, the volume is as low as we've seen it in a long time, if I'm not incorrect. Is that true?
I noticed that it came up about a foot during that last rain event.
Okay. So, the chances are that it would get better, more than it would get worse. It seems like the volume, you mentioned volume was a key contributing factor, and since the volume is pretty low, if it rains, that's actually good because that brings more dissolved oxygen into the system?
It's all complicated. Rain, volume is, we'll have probably saturated dissolved oxygen when it first comes in. It will also have nutrients that will trigger an algae bloom. That algae bloom will die, that will consume dissolved oxygen. Can't say exactly when. It does seem like when we start a summer with a full Bird Refuge, and then we have a hot summer, that might be our greatest prediction of having an extreme odor event. But we have not been able to identify any specific meteorological conditions that predate an odor event.
Okay. And based on that, I think it might be better to do a little more research on that or see if we can get a grant to study that, because it seems like if we can find the answer to that science problem for our marine situation, the rest of the world's coasts could benefit from that example. Or if another coastline has figured out the relationship between algae and the water situation, we could borrow from that science. The other question I had is, so you showed that the tennis center, there would be water coming from there to the lake? How much water is that going to produce, and where is it coming from? The new treatment wetland at the municipal tennis courts?
Councilmember Dominguez, there is a spring at the southwest corner of the golf course of the Montecito Country Club. And it goes into a storm drain that comes into, comes out into an open culvert. It suggests you go walk over behind the municipal tennis courts, and you can see it. It's an open channel, and it always flows even during the worst of the drought. It continues to flow at a very low rate. And so, the idea is, sometimes that does have high nutrient concentrations. And so, the idea was for low flows that we would create a system that could treat, could remove some of the nutrients coming in for the low flows. So, the water that's being fed into the Bird Refuge during the summer months, that we wouldn't have space to have any kind of stormwater treatment facility there.
So, you're saying taking the runoff from the golf course and filter it and put it into the lake?
It's spring water, so it's probably coming through the groundwater there of the golf course. I wouldn't say it's exactly runoff. The runoff during a storm event, I don't think we have the capacity to treat stormwater runoff. It just comes too fast, too high of volume.
So, it would be the volume you could successfully treat?
And that will be for the engineers to determine with the amount of space that we have, how, what rate can we treat? But I'm almost certain we can treat, that we can treat the low flow that comes out of that pipe during summer.
And what's that rate?
I think it's about 10 gallons per minute.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sneddon?
I think the idea, right, is that any circulation at all is an improvement over what we have. It's like the neglected fish tank that has no filter and is just evaporating water off with no new circulation. Is that...
Councilmembers and Madam Mayor, circulation often refers to just the movement of the water and not the replacement of the water. And one thing that we've learned in the several years of studying this is that the Bird Refuge is really well-mixed on a daily basis. We have, we've been doing depth profiles, we've done horizontal transects, and we don't see much difference. It looks like it mixes on a daily basis, and it's just due to the land-sea breeze, and it's so shallow that it entrains the water and mixes it. But replacing water is what seems to be the important step. So, whether you're, or, and what has been done in many other scenarios is to replace some of the biomass. So, many of the companies, vendors that have come to us with the silver bullet, when we get into the details of the projects from which they demonstrate success, there's some way they're removing biomass and nutrients, which we don't have a way to do at the Bird Refuge.
And the permitting process would drive any further research you would need or any questions you would need to answer as you go along with the process, if you continue forward?
Okay. Okay, very good. Well, I'll weigh in that I will support the motion. I was on the Sustainability Committee and saw all of your ideas, and it's been a long time that we've been looking at the issue, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Dominguez for your good questions. These are a good discussion. The audience is out there hearing all about this issue. They're not here for this item, but we will go ahead and... They're not here for this item, but we will go ahead and have a roll call, Ms. Gorman. I think we're ready to vote.
Thanks. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yeah. No.
Mayor Potemras?
Hi.
Councilmember Hart?
Hi.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. So that was five to one with Dominguez saying no.
Correct. Motion by Hart, second by Sneddon, all ayes with no from Councilmember Dominguez.
Okay, thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you so much, staff. We'll keep a good thought on that item. And item 11, Madam Clerk?
Item 11, drought update and annual water supply management report.
Madam Mayor, if I might interject on terms of procedure, I've been in discussions with Mr. Casey and Ms. Gorman, and we've concluded that rather than the mayor trying to read back motions, the city clerk will. And so we'd like to suggest that as a matter of course, the clerk be asked to read back the motion.
Oh, okay.
That will assure us that the minutes are right.
Okay. And then on procedure, some of you didn't have your microphones on, so we can hear you in the room, but we got feedback from the audience that you said yes or no, and not everybody hears it. So be sure your microphone is on. So thanks, Mr. Kalan, Mr. Hagmark, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, and here to give another drought update. And with this, also the annual water supply management report, which, as you may recall, is a backwards-looking document of what happened in water year 17. So today's presentation, I think the last time we spoke with council was in early December, so it's been a while. And we've got quite a bit to go over. So we'll be going over the current drought status, how the community is doing with demand, our current water supply strategy, water supply status, just a little bit about the Thomas Fire debris flows and what Water Resources staff have been doing with that. And then we'll finish with the annual water supply management report. So rainfall, as you might expect, is very low. The only real rainfall we got was the May 9th, May 8th, 9th rain event, which came down pretty heavy, which actually did, we did have some flows in our local creeks and including the San Andres River. We saw just a little bit of flow while it was raining. Not sure how much of that was actually water, but it did have a lot of something getting into our reservoirs. So we are 31% of normal at Gibraltar, 42 at Kachuma, and 25% of normal for this time, for this date. As far as countywide or statewide, we haven't seen the state update this graphic really to recognize, I think, where we are right now, which is we're getting into that extreme drought situation. And again, noting that this graphic doesn't really get down to the local level. I mean, Santa Maria is in a much better situation groundwater-wise than we are, and so it doesn't recognize that. But we are still in a very significant drought condition right now. Right now, NOAA looking how three months, February, March, and April, are predicting below-average rainfall for the remainder of the year. So far, they've been accurate. Again, we have a high pressure sitting offshore that is kind of pushing all those storms north into Oregon and Washington. So demand status, this continues to be the silver lining to this drought. The community hit 32% conservation for December, which is really right on par with what we were hoping for. And our running average continues to stick right around 40%. As a reminder, our conservation target for this community is 30%. Revenues, revenues remain strong. And one of the things that we're seeing in, at least with November, December, is that we're seeing more, same amount of water we were predicting, but more tier-two and tier-three usage. Again, this is an unaudited, we haven't gone through and really got into the details on this, but we expect it's because November and December have been unusually dry that we're seeing more people getting into that tier-two and tier-three range. But hopefully, we'll have more as we get a little further into this and have some more time to look at this. But I think what's nice and has been concerning us is the community has been exceeding our conservation goal than we were concerned about revenues. As far as our 12-month running average, again, conservation's sitting right around 9,100 acre-feet a year is what we're trending at. Again, that's water demands that we haven't seen. I would go, I'm trying to find these numbers. I think you'd have to go back to the 50s to find when this community was using that amount of water. I mean, this is really extraordinary how much conservation is going on right now, and it's fantastic. And it's really buying us more time to deal with this unprecedented drought.
Okay. So my name's Kelly Dyer. I'm the Water Supply Manager, and I wanted to take a moment to walk through this chart. It's something we've shown every month since 2014 as part of our drought updates, but I wanted to give a little more background on where it comes from. This chart originated from our 2011 Long-Term Water Supply Plan, which was a policy document for how we respond to droughts. And the design drought in that plan was from 1947 to 52. And to be conservative, the city added an extra sixth year of drought for planning purposes. What we've experienced is a much drier condition, and it's also a much longer drought. This is much more severe than what we had planned for. And what we've been doing is using our plan, our Long-Term Water Supply Plan policies, to adaptively manage our supplies based on our current conditions. So when Kachuma stops spilling, that's when we know we might be entering into a drought condition. The last time that Kachuma spilled was May of 2011. So that's when we began tracking our water supplies. And in 2014 was when we realized it's time to declare officially that we're in a drought. And conditions have, became more and more serious with the stage-three drought condition. We're currently in year seven of the drought, and we've extended our supply projections out three more years. And so you can see, we are projecting a shortage out in 2020. And we'll be coming back to council in spring of 2017 to address that shortage after we know more about what happens with our rainfall and inflows this spring. So looking at the current water year, starting from the bottom up, the purple is our recycled water. The dark and medium blues are Kachuma supplies. The light blue is Gibraltar. The green is our state water allocation. Orange, our supplemental water purchases. And the light green is desalination. And then for the current year, as well as the next two years, that's based on the 30% conservation target, which the community has been exceeding. So Gibraltar reservoir is currently at about 41% of capacity. That's around 2,000 acre-feet. We did receive some inflows in this recent storm event, but we don't know how much of that was actually water and how much was mud and other sediment. We are able to treat Gibraltar water. However, we have other sources that are better water quality. We do see water quality impacts resulting from all the fires in the Gibraltar watershed. So those, it takes usually about three weeks for the sediment to settle out before we would, before it's good water quality that we would start diverting again. So we did shut down deliveries just ahead of the storm. We have not resumed them at this point. We have been using other sources. Kachuma is at about 39% of capacity, which is 75,000 acre-feet. If conditions continue to be dry this spring, we're, the Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board will need to make a decision this summer, roughly sometime this summer, to reinstall the pilings for the barge. So the barge may be coming back if conditions continue to be dry. We did receive about 600 acre-feet of inflow. It did not have as much of an effect on the Kachuma water quality, I think because it's a larger reservoir. So we did, we didn't have any effect on our ability to treat Kachuma water. I do want to mention, though, there were water quality impacts. It's just that we were, we've improved our treatment capabilities over the years so that we, it didn't affect our ability to treat it. Com had installed a log boom around our intake tower at Kachuma, and that was effective in preventing any debris or damage to the intake. And as mentioned, does, we did have water quality impacts, but it didn't affect our treatment capability. There were water quality impacts to the Hilton Creek area, and 13 omicus were found dead. And the reason this is important to us is because omicus is a genetic term for steelhead trout, and it also includes rainbow trout. The steelhead are an endangered species, and there's a biological opinion for the Kachuma project, which affects our water supplies. So the water quality did affect the fish at Kachuma. We have had several fires. We've had the Thomas Fire, the Whittier Fire, and the Ray Fire. And those impacts are going to be ongoing for several years. It affects our water supplies from Kachuma, Gibraltar, and state water. And as mentioned, it also affects the steelhead habitat. So I wanted to take a moment to talk about our response to the water quality challenges. Turbidity and organic material are the main challenges with treating the surface water. And we are currently seeking FEMA funding to offset the higher treatment costs. But this, this isn't our first fire. We had the Zaca Fire, which burned 120,000 acres of the Gibraltar watershed. And we have had water quality impacts since then. So our CATER water treatment staff are excellent, and they're up for facing the water quality challenges. Some of the improvements that have been made over the years are the addition of ozone pretreatment, an activated carbon feed system, enhanced filter backwash capability, which allows for continuous cleaning of the filters, pretreatment in Laurel Reservoir. All of these things have helped us to position the city to be able to treat more challenging water quality. We are collaborating with our neighboring water agencies. CATER Water Treatment Plant also serves Montecito and Carpinteria. And for the city's adaptive management strategy, we, going into the storm, will keep Laurel Reservoir full, which is on this side of the mountains. And that provides us flexibility operationally for several weeks. We can, we can operate CATER for several weeks without diverting in the wintertime when our demands are low. So that gives us some, some time before we have to take the water down. And we also have a diverse water supply portfolio where we can use other water sources. Right now, our groundwater wells are offline, but we are exercising them regularly, regularly in case we need to bring them back online because of water quality issues. For imported water, we continue to maximize the delivery of state water to Kachuma. It's about 280 acre-feet per month for the city. We have about 2,000 acre-feet of water stored at Kachuma and about 1,400 that's stored at San Luis Reservoir. The initial allocation from the State Department of Water Resources was 15%. It went up to 20%, I believe, yesterday. So that's an additional allocation to the city. However, we, it's not enough to keep our pipe flowing full to Kachuma through, we're trying to keep it, that's our strategy, is to keep that pipe flowing full while we're in this significant drought. And so assuming the allocation doesn't go up to 100%, we're looking for additional supplemental water purchases. 1,500 acre-feet is currently what we're looking for. That could change if conditions improve either here or in Northern California. And we'll be reassessing our actual needs in spring of 2018. City currently has a water debt of 3,300 acre-feet from previous exchanges, and that is something that we can pay off over time. We have 10 years to pay it back and potentially could apply for an extension to that if we need to. So our groundwater basins are currently at about 30% capacity based on modeling studies we've conducted with USGS. And our groundwater levels, we monitor monthly. We have about 60 monitoring wells, and the water levels are still very low, about where they were during the last drought in 1992. Full recovery of those water levels are expected to take about five to 10 years. And again, we're exercising our wells regularly in case we need groundwater as a backup supply.
So the Desal plant is in full operation. It's producing about 2,200 gallons per minute, which ends up being about nine acre-feet a day. Contractor still has a few items left to do. One of the things, you'll see the three treatment trains on the left of that picture there. Per the contract, they are to receive a cladding, it's kind of a shell that goes around it, basically to keep sunlight off the equipment, also keep rodents and other things out of the equipment. It's just kind of a general, all-purpose, control the sound, that kind of stuff. And contractor has been struggling to find a subcontractor to do that. So that's one of the things that they're working on. And then we're also working with them on trying to set up for public tours, trying to figure out safe path. Again, we built this facility, obviously, in quick time to serve our water needs and not necessarily around how to get people around there and show them the facility. And so we've been working with them to try and figure out a way to do that safely, keeping in mind that some of these pieces of equipment have 800 pounds per square inch of pressure on these pipes. And you certainly don't want any of these things ever to have a leak or something, it could really cause some damage. And so just trying to figure out a safe way to get people in here. We're also working with IDE to figure out displays and things that we can really have the public understand, the energy impact, the environmental impact, how the filters work and that kind of stuff. So we're working on that behind the scenes, hoping to get that ready. City TV just completed a really great informational video, talks about the history of the plant, the technology that went into it, and I think the role it serves in our water supply. And so that's going to be going up on YouTube shortly, and will be also on our city website. And then the Prop 1 grant, unfortunately, we heard on Wednesday last week that we were not a finalist for that. We have some questions as to why. They listed a very vague explanation on the response, and so we've asked for more information, and they've yet to respond to us. There is a public comment period. Our comments are due by the 9th, and so we are very focused on getting those responses back to them. We have reached out to Senator Jackson's office, and she is extremely interested in helping us with that. In fact, she's got a call with EWR tomorrow. And so trying to get to the bottom of why, we feel like we went through the list and we had, we've met all the obligations, so we're a little confused about the findings on this. There is still about $50 million in grant funding that they, for Desal projects, that they still have. They only awarded 34 million of the 90-something million that they had. So it's a question of what was the issue? Was there more information that you needed? It just wasn't clear. So I'm not giving up yet, and we're still going to be pursuing this. And hopefully, next month, when I come back, we'll have some better news for you. So as far as the Thomas Fire debris flow response, I just wanted to take some time to just highlight, you know, the wonderful work of our fire department and police department involved this, but what we don't talk about, too, is what our Water Resources staff and engineering staff have been doing. So just kind of set the stage. The water, Montecito Water District was literally decimated. I mean, that system was cut up so badly from this event. I mean, pipes that had been in the ground since the '20s survived how many storms? I mean, this truly has been a geological event in the amount of material, and has been moved. And so to that, we had, the State Department of Water Resources was there to look at this, and they'd never seen a water system cut up so bad, pulled apart by the storm. And so... And so, um, of course, being part of a, a good, strong community as we are, we wanted to get in and help and we've had a lot of staff over there. The sanitary district was also impacted, just a lot of mud and debris in the system that we were able to also assist them with. But really with the water system, we've had, um, pushing upwards of 20 people a day over there, helping. Um, I mean, every level, we've had engineers over there helping basically try and put the system back either in a temporary manner or in a permanent fashion. Our distribution staff helping them with the re-pressurization. I mean, parts of the system now have been without water for three weeks. How do you get all the debris out of those? Flush it all out and then prove to the state that the water is safe. And I mean, even last night, I got a call from the general manager saying, "I need eight more guys for tomorrow. We need to get this done." All right, well, we'll be right back. And so we've sat over our guys today and, and to help them because they got one last area that they need to get cleaned out. We've had people supporting the EOC and again, we've even had, we've even been the representative for the sanitary district and water district at the EOC, getting information, getting resources for them. And then again, our lab staff have been out there pulling the samples. I mean, we've, we've really gone the extra mile to help them out as, as part of, uh, an arrangement of mutual aid where it's part of this, uh, arrangement called Cal-Warn in which we can come in like that. And again, uh, our costs will pass on to the district who will hopefully be, uh, paid by FEMA for it. But, uh, the point is there, we're, we're there to support our neighbors. And that's, that's, I think the, proud to be a part of an organization that works like that. I mean, that's been great. I think our guys have learned a lot. They've been asked to do, you know, some pretty harrowing things. We've been out there with equipment trying to find water lines. We've been pulled off of this to look for victims. So, um, staff have really, um, and then it was interesting about a lot of the staff that's been there. It's, you know, "Hey, do you want to take the day off? You've been out here for seven days straight now." "No, I don't want to take the day off. I, I want to be here until this is done." It, it's really been, uh, I'm really proud, really proud of the team. And there's just a picture of the few of them, uh, a few days ago, that have been out there tirelessly every day, helping to put this back together.
Okay, so I, uh, I'm going to be discussing the 2017 Water Supply Management Report. And the purpose of this report is to summarize our water supplies used in the last year. It's a backwards looking document. It is part of our EIR requirement for the state water project and it's required that the city make findings that the groundwater basins are in long-term balance. So we have a very diverse water supply mix. We have Lake Kachuma, Gibraltar Reservoir, which flows through Mission Tunnel. We have state water and supplemental water purchases, groundwater, desalination, recycled water and a strong water conservation program. This chart compares our planned water supplies for 2017 versus the actual water supplies. The red bar is the extraordinary conservation that we saw from our community, which exceeded the targets last year. And that additional conservation savings allowed us to, um, use less groundwater. We also received, um, additional inflows to Gibraltar Reservoir, which is the light blue, which helped us to reduce our use of state water, which is the orange bar. And, uh, the purple bar is our recycled water, which has been on par, uh, with what we had planned. We have been able to, um, eliminate the blending into that system because the water quality has been meeting our requirements. So our groundwater basins, uh, our strategy really is to base load our groundwater supplies at a minimal amount during normal conditions. And then during droughts and emergencies, we increase our pumping, uh, pulling water out of storage. And, uh, just wanted to walk through a little bit, this is a graphic of our groundwater basins and our two main potable sources are Foothill Basin and Storage Unit 1. The city has three wells, uh, in the Foothill Basin, but we also share that basin with other pumpers such as Lacumbra Mutual, Mutual Water Company. In Storage Unit 1, the city has six wells, um, and we're the only known pumper in that basin in the deeper aquifer. And all, all of our active wells, except for one Alameda well, are fed to the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant, which treats for naturally occurring iron, manganese and sulfur. And we're currently working on the design to connect Alameda to that plant as well. For Storage Unit 3, that is, the water quality is more challenging in that basin and it's a very small basin. The city only has one well, um, and it's non-potable. It's used to supplement our recycled water system as needed. And something that's really important, uh, groundwater is a critical, all of our supplies are critical to us. But groundwater is on this side of the mountains. It's a truly local water source. And now we have D-SAL as well. Those are truly local drink, uh, drinking water supplies, um, that would be available to us if there was ever an interruption in supplies, surface water supplies from the other side of the mountain. So our Foothill Basin, um, as mentioned, there's several pumpers. We do have a model that helps us to estimate the yields that's available to the city. And during droughts, that estimated yield is about 5,600 acre feet. Last year, the city produced 382 acre feet out of the basin. It's estimated that we have about 1,300 acre feet remaining. Um, the water levels are low. They're at about 1992 levels, which was during the last drought. However, we do have data going back decades earlier that shows that water levels were actually lower, uh, previously. Storage Unit 1, uh, had the multi-year drought yield ranges between 7,000 to 13,000 acre feet. And that depends on the amount of seawater intrusion that we would consider allowable. And so last year, our production was 956 acre feet. And based on the drought yield of the lower end, 7,400 acre feet, um, we have about 2,400 acre feet remaining. We do continue to monitor for seawater intrusion in this basin and, um, we've also shifted some of our pumping farther inland. We reactivated High School and Alameda well, uh, during this drought to, um, minimize seawater intrusion impacts. Storage Unit 3, as mentioned, does have more challenging water quality. It's not considered, we don't use it for potable water supply. There are other pumpers in that basin. The estimated safe yield available to the city is about 100 acre feet per year. Last year, our production was 12 acre feet and we will continue to use our, our well in that basin as needed, um, to supplement the recycled water system if there's, if our plant is down for repairs, for example. So the recommendation is that council approve and adopt the City of Santa Barbara Water Supply Management Report for the 2017 water year, finding that groundwater resources are in long-term balance in accordance with the conjunctive management element of the city's long-term water supply plan.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Mr. Friedman and then Ms. Sneddon.
Great, uh, thank you. First, I want to thank the public. Uh, as you've seen, you've, you've done more than your share of, of conservation and it's important that we continue to do that as you've seen the numbers, but I really want to acknowledge the role that our residents have played in, in the conservation aspect. I also want to thank staff. As you can see, we're being very proactive, looking at this as a long-term strategy and the information you've provided today, uh, shows that we are, we are taking this seriously and we're looking ahead because we're one of, if I correct me wrong, one of two counties that were not out of the drought last year, uh, where the rest of the state was. So, uh, we have our unique challenges here as compared to the rest of the state. Last Thursday, I went to the Central Coast Water Authority, uh, my first, uh, meeting there and the, the 15%, now 20% allocation of state water came up. But it was interesting, uh, you showed a chart earlier, Mr. Hagmark, of we don't know what the rest of the state was. Well, they had a chart there and the rest of the state is red or, or deep red in terms of rainfall for this year. So, uh, they did have some rain, but we're, we're looking statewide at a drought and the information we got at Central Coast Water Authority was that this year is one of the driest years ever on record and it's just a little bit better, not much, than it was from the 2014-15 year, which was the driest on record. So we're having a lot of, of challenges with, with water. And so again, uh, thank you for all you're doing to conserve, uh, here in Santa Barbara. If you could pull up the slide, I have a couple of questions on, um, the groundwater, uh, slide. If you could go back, um, it's right after the imported water. So it's the groundwater and then desalination.
Sure.
I had a question on, on the recharge, the five, the 10-year recharge. What are the assumptions in that? Does that mean that we don't use any groundwater and we have normal rainfall?
That, that was based on looking at the recovery after the last drought. Um, we looked at our historical water levels, um, and we really didn't, we don't, really don't pump our groundwater basins, um, when we have surface water supplies available. So it's really little to no pumping, uh, in order for it to recover five to 10 years after that 1990s drought.
And that includes normal rainfall to, to refill, correct? A normal pattern, whereas if we have smaller or less, less rain, it's going to impact that timeline as well.
Correct, correct.
In conjunction with that, going, um, to Kachuma, you, one of your slides mentioned that it's 39% full. That, that number is a little, I don't, I want to understand that number better because there's, it's not that we have 39% of water available, uh, to pump because, could you explain that number? I'm looking at what's the Deadpool percentage? And then also can you talk a little bit about, um, the two, the two opinions, the biological opinion and the, um, and the downstream water rights? Because my understanding is both of those are not finalized yet and that actually, those three combined impact that 39% number. So can you actually clarify that number for us?
Sure, that's correct. Um, there's a number of various accounts within Kachuma and we're just a small slice of the pie. The city itself, um, receives an allocation of about 82, 77 acre feet per year and we have about 80% of that right now in Kachuma. That's all we have. So, uh, that's about 6,000 or so acre feet. Um, and unless it rains, we, we really won't have any, any more than that. So there are other, um, the city is one of five Kachuma member units, um, that receive an allocation from the Bureau of Reclamation. And outside of that, there's also downstream water rights, which, um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how much is in there right now. I think they're planning to release about 8,000 acre feet this summer for the downstream releases that occur every year to replenish the groundwater basins. And then we have, um, fish accounts as well, uh, as well as the minimum pool, which is about 12,000. So the city slices only about 6,000 out of what's in there right now.
So it, it's safe to say that with, um, the unknowns for the downstream water rights and what the, the future from the National Marines Fishery Service for the biological opinion, that the historic levels that we've had available to us in Kachuma will probably decrease, uh, for long-term planning purposes? Is that a safe assumption to say?
Uh, the, the downstream water rates shouldn't affect that, but the Kachuma biological opinion, um, has the potential, we're under, currently the, we have a biological opinion from 2000, um, that's in place. But, uh, nymphs and reclamation are under reconsultation and we'll be releasing a revised biological opinion, which could substantially, uh, impact the amount of water supply that's available to us.
And then I have one, uh, well, a couple of questions, but it's the, the D-SAL, if you go to the, the D-SAL slide. So it says that the plant is in full operation. What does that mean in terms of the amount of acre feet we're able to produce? And then, uh, there, there would be the possibility to expand that and what would be the process should, you know, worst-case scenario come forward to take to expand this? And how much, uh, what would be the, the acre feet of the expansion?
So right now it's producing about nine acre feet a day, um, which would get us to that 3,125 acre feet a year. The, uh, expansion is something that we anticipate talking about in the spring, once we know kind of where we are. We went through this exercise last year in, in anticipation of continued dry and we had a break, but we do have some costs that we can bring back. Again, we had gotten a proposal from I, IDE, the contractor who's operating it and who constructed it, um, but that was good for a period of time. We'd have to have them take a look at it. They've now demobilized from the site, so they'd have to bring in new staff or bring people back and do all this. So we will be, um, refreshing those numbers and we can bring that back as part of the long-term discussion about what we want to do looking out to 2020.
Thank you. And again, uh, for the public, uh, both in the room and listening, you can see we have a lot of challenges. So thank you for all the work you're doing and continue to do that as we do our diligence here to come up with a plan to address the drought, uh, as it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sneddon?
Thank you. I just really want to commend your far-thinking plans and, and, um, we have this incredibly diversified water portfolio due to your planning. And any one of those could fail us and we would still be okay. And, um, I know that's taken a lot of long-term planning and in some areas where groundwater is completely drawn down or relying solely on D-SAL or only on state water. And, um, I think it's, it's really, um, comforting to know that we have such a diversified portfolio. And then just another thing, Mr. Hagmark, you just made that passing comment about, um, working in partnership with Montecito and it was much more than that. You did so much and the Public Works Department and immediately going out there with equipment and people and manpower and woman power and, and all the forces that we have to, to bring and to help. And I'm just really, really proud of that partnership and thank you for taking that initiative.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I want to second that. It was without even being asked, you were there and ready and, and it was an impressive mutual response from all the different agencies, but your help for Montecito, I think, was particularly helpful at that moment in time. One question I had has to do with the December conservation levels. You said it was 32%. What was October and November? Is it trending down from the 40% or was that kind of a big drop into December?
Yeah, we're seeing, I think we pulled it up, we're starting to see a trend with it heading down. As, as we typically see this time of year, it starts to, as you can see, it starts to follow, I see trending down. It starts to follow what we anticipated from the community, um, given that there's less discretionary water use that we have in those, as we get into the cooler months.
So you're thinking, you're thinking that this new level of 32% is probably the new sustainable level? And that was the target we were hoping for. It was sticky initially, it was staying at 40%. You're thinking now that we might be at that level and stay in there?
I, I don't know. I think this community is going to continue to conserve and I think we're seeing, uh, in the winter months, uh, a lower conservation, still a really impressive number, but, um, I don't put it past this community that they'll be back up in the 40% by the time the summer comes around again. I, I just, I, I, I've, I've decided not to bet against this community more when it comes to how much they're going to conserve. There's, the conservation here is just incredible.
And that's directly related to the water supply chart that you show where you have the deficit in year 20. If it is closer to 40 than 30, that will go away.
That will pretty much address a lot of that, that shortage, yes.
Okay, thank you.
My question is the supplemental supplies, that means we buy it from other parts of the state. So it, there must be some opportunity for that?
Yes.
Because it's rained in other parts of the state or how would you answer?
Madam Mayor, the, um, it's very dry in other parts of the state, but, uh, the Central Coast Water Authority is the lead on, uh, pursuing these supplemental water purchases in exchange. They work on behalf of the city and, uh, they have found some potential, uh, farmers north of the delta that may be interested in, um, foregoing planting this year and, and selling their water instead. But we'll also be looking for exchanges with other state water contractors as well. So, um, it's really a case by case on who, who may have water, but we have, uh, we believe that, that we will be able to find, um, some opportunities to evaluate.
I see no speaker slips. A motion would be in order, Mr. Hart, your lights on?
Um, I would move item B in the staff recommendation to approve and adopt the City of Santa Barbara Water Supply Management Report for 2017 Water Year, finding that groundwater resources are in long-term balance in accordance with the conjunctive management element of the city's long-term water supply plan.
Second? Could you say second?
Yes, I did, sorry.
Great. And since you read that so well, I don't think the clerk needs to repeat it, but that would be the motion. Any discussion to the motion, Mr. Dominguez?
I wanted to start by, uh, by thanking both of our, our staff members.
I wanted to start by thanking both of our staff members for these incredible reports in our, both the city's water supply management report, which is several pages with, with full color graphics on some of the tables. So I can tell you, I went to a lot of effort to make these very, very elaborate and comprehensive. And then to echo what people have said earlier, your support of the Montecito Water District has been amazing, words can't describe it. I spoke with Nick Turner, I met Nick when he first started at Montecito. We were attending an event in Oxnard at their water district. And so I called just to leave him a short message, just, you know, encouraging him during this difficult time and thanking him for working hard. And he called me back and I said, please don't call me back, I know you're busy, but he called back because he wanted to thank me for all the great work you guys have been doing and your staff. So let me just pass that right back to you guys. Just really, I think, has made the difference night and day to their staff and obviously to their residents who are really at a, at a time of need. So thanks again for that great work and thank you for keeping our water supply secured. And I wouldn't say looking good because Mother Nature hasn't been really helpful this year, but at least looking secured for the next two years. And I'm sure you'll figure out a way to deal with the third year out. Thank you.
Thank you. It seems we're in agreement, so let's, we can go forego a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you, water staff. Next item?
Next item, item 12, Tenant-Landlord Task Force Recommendations.
Very good. Ms. Gray, thank you. And Eric Friedman, Mr. Friedman?
We've had a request for a five-minute break. I think that's okay. Thank you.
No. Madam Clerk, the item, please?
Item 12, Tenant-Landlord Task Force Recommendations.
Thank you. Ms. Gray?
Thank you, Meta Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Sue Gray and I'm the Community Development Business Manager. Is this better? Yeah, thanks. With me today is Mr. John Jostis. He is the facilitator that we hired to help out with the Tenant-Landlord Task Force meetings. And today we are here to present to you the recommendations that the Tenant-Landlord Task Force has agreed upon. A little background history, in March of 2017, the city attorney presented council with some potential tenant protection strategies. They included enhanced mediation, mandatory leases, safety inspections, just cause evictions, and rent control. At that meeting, staff was directed to return to council with a recommendation on the formation of a task force. In June of 2017, council formed the task force and appointed four tenant representatives and four landlord representatives. Unfortunately, early on in the process, one of the tenant representatives and one of the landlord representatives had to resign. So we are, the task force consisted of three tenant reps and three landlord reps. We had Frank Rodriguez from CAUZ, Jerry Morales from the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara, Petra Lowen from the Independent Living Resource Center, Tommy Thompson from the California Apartment Association, Andy Alexander, Santa Barbara Board of Realtors, and Laura Bodie from Santa Barbara Rental Property Association. In addition, councilmembers Dominguez and Hart were appointed as liaisons to the task The task force was directed to consider and make recommendations to council on possible tenant protection measures, including enhancements to the city's rental housing mediation program, mandatory leases, safety inspections, just cause evictions, and any other alternatives they might consider except for rent control. The task force met a total of five times between July and November. All of the meetings were subject to the Brown Act. And in between the, the regular meetings, there were two subcommittees that were formed. And they were formed to refine recommendations or to explore areas of potential common ground on subjects where the group was deadlocked. Each subcommittee was comprised of one tenant representative and one landlord representative. The first subcommittee focused on education and enhancements to the rental housing mediation program. And the second subcommittee focused on just cause evictions and health and safety inspections. The subcommittees each brought back their recommendations to the full task force. Each of the task force's regular meetings focused on one to two of the council-directed topics. Throughout each of the five task force meetings, Mr. Jostis assisted the group in developing points of tentative agreement. And at the final meeting, the recommendation packet that was voted on includes the eight points that received majority approval. It's important to note that not, although not every individual recommendation received unanimous support, the full package was approved unanimously. The first three recommendations focused on education for both landlords and tenants on the importance of written leases, the rental housing mediation program and its services, tenant landlord rights and responsibilities, and minimum safety standards. The mechanisms for the education, the, the recommendation is to utilize the city's business license mailing list to provide education to landlords with three or more units. The second one is to work with our task force partners on the development of a joint website, sponsoring education events, and distributing informational packets. And the third recommendation was to solicit participation of other South Coast jurisdictions in this education initiative. The fourth recommendation is that council adopt an ordinance that requires landlords to offer written leases. And the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors and the Santa Barbara Rental Property Association have agreed to include specific language regarding the city's rental housing mediation program in their leases, which includes contact information, so that tenants know how to reach the program. The fifth and sixth recommendations fall under the safety inspection category. The recommendation is to consider the development of an inspection program that is similar to the one in the city of Anaheim. The city of Anaheim's program requires all owners of two or more units to complete what's called a declaration of compliance or a self-certification. If the declaration is not returned to the city within 60 days, then enforcement is triggered, which may include inspection fees or citations. However, if the owner returns the declaration and certifies that all their units are safe, the city then does a exterior site visit of the property. And if there's no significant code violations and no violations were reported in the last 12 months, then the property is deemed certified and a compliance certificate is issued, which is effective for five years. And the sixth recommendation is that council establish a fund to support offender-driven inspections and remediation, which could expand the city's code enforcement program. The task force was unable to come to agreement on the topic of just cause evictions. However, they did agree to recommend that council develop a joint protection and accountability initiative. This basically means that the city would develop an ordinance and the land, saying that the landlord must offer a one-year renewable lease. If the landlord chooses not to renew the lease for another year, then the tenant can request that the landlord attend a mandatory, non-binding, one-time conciliation meeting to explain why the lease would not be renewed. If the landlord could demonstrate that their property wasn't available for a full year, the term of the lease could be shortened. And the eighth and final recommendation is that council adopt a tenant displacement and relocation assistance ordinance, which would provide some protection to tenants for mass evictions. Mass evictions occur when a property owner wants to rehabilitate or upgrade multiple units and it results in multiple tenants receiving notices and being displaced. The recommendation utilizes a tiered approach depending on the number of units that are on the property. It would also include increasing the notification to 90 days where there are 10 or more tenants are displaced, as opposed to the 30 or 60-day notices required by state law. So this is the tiered approach. Properties with one to five units, there would be no displacement assistance. Properties with six to 14 units, there would be no monetary assistance. However, the landlord would be required to attend a mandatory, non-binding mediation session. For units 15 or more units, landlords would be required to pay four times the median advertised rental rate or $5,000, whichever is greater. So it's basically four months' worth of rent. There were also several areas, topic areas, where the task force could not come to majority support. The first one was mandatory mediation for rent increases. The task force was split 50/50 on this topic, requiring mandatory mediation for rent increases above a specified percentage. The landlord representatives were opposed to any discussion or restrictions related to rent increases. The task force was also unable to come to agreement on a proactive, citywide, fee-based inspection program. Most of the tenant representatives supported a strong proactive fee-based program. The landlord representatives were not supportive of a fee or program that would include landlords that do not have a history of health or safety violations. And as mentioned earlier, the task force was split 50/50 on the discussion of just cause eviction. The tenant representatives desired strong protections that would ensure accountability for the eviction or terminations of tenants. The landlord representatives were unsupportive of any protections except those provided by law. And finally, at the last task force meeting, the, the task force received information regarding the County of Santa Barbara Ordinance Chapter 44 and asked if they wanted to adjust their recommendation on tenant displacement, relocation assistance to mirror the county's ordinance. The task force members felt that they did not have enough time or information to consider revising that recommendation. There are eight recommendations before you. They're vague in nature and most will require significant work by staff and the ordinance committee before they're presented for council action. Therefore, staff is recommending that council begin the process by referring two recommendations to the ordinance committee. And that does not mean that staff is recommending that those are the only two that council approve or not approve. It's just that, timing-wise and priority-wise, those were the two that staff felt would be the most beneficial to start with. In addition, recommendations one through three, they're regarding the education initiatives, council can direct staff to begin work on those immediately as they do not require an ordinance. Because further review of the task force recommendations will require significant staff resources from both the Community Development Department and the City Attorney's Office, staff would like to offer two options. The first one would be to adjust the fiscal year 2019 priorities and utilize existing resources to begin the process of the, of working on these recommendations. And the second one, if council wishes to begin work immediately, we would ask council to appropriate funding for consultant assistance so that we could fit it in with our workload. And the city attorney is estimating $30,000 to $90,000, depending on the number of recommendations council is directing staff to work on. And the Community Development Department is estimating $15,000 to $44,000. So the recommendation before you today is that you receive the report and provide direction regarding the recommendations from the council-appointed Tenant-Landlord Task Force. And with that, Mr. Justice and I are happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to start with a clarifying question. So if recommendations one, two, and three are of the educational variety, and you say those could start without an ordinance, so that would be putting the rental housing mediation program to work on that or staff somehow?
Meta Mayor, that would most likely be staff in my division of community development. It would possibly include some of the rental housing mediation staff, but it would primarily be myself and the supervisor.
And then the other two recommendations, you're saying you want to start working, that's what you're recommending to go work on. So the only thing left out of the eight recommendations is really the safety inspections?
And the mandatory leases.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Rouse, I think you had your light on first and then Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Meta Mayor. Couple of questions. Ms. Gray, you mentioned mediation, mandatory mediation in some cases and how is that, who pays for that? How's that financed?
Meta Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, did you say how is that paid for?
Who pays for that? Who pays the fees for mediation?
That has not been worked out yet. Like I said, these are all vague recommendations. Depending on the, the amount and the caseload, right now, our mediation program does not accept payments from tenants or landlords.
And then a question on the, on the council agenda report, page four refers to mandatory leases and it talks about, that refers to whether or not it's a written lease or a written lease would be mandatory. And the following page has another term, says mandatory leases, but that refers to a term of minimum one year. So I'm just confused if that's, means two things, one thing, or should be labeled separately?
Meta Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, it is a bit confusing. The task force first voted on the written, mandatory written leases without any term associated with it. And then later on, when they got into the conversation about just cause evictions, agreeing on a mandatory one-year lease was kind of a compromise between the two.
So for the purposes of our upcoming discussion, then, is the talk of a mandatory written lease also to assume that'll mean a year minimum? Or does that, can that be parsed?
It would depend on which recommendations you want to pursue. If you wanted to pursue the one that has a mandatory one-year renewable lease, that takes care of recommendation number four.
And then my last question is, you referred to something when we talked about eviction as otherwise as provided before by law. Are we going to get a synopsis of standing law and what is part of the code now as opposed to what is being discussed tonight?
Yes, the further work would definitely delve into that.
I mean, to be, 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 to
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we didn't spend a whole lot of time coming up with the amount of time spent on each recommendation. The range is based on the dollar amount. So, for instance, I can't speak for the city attorney's office, but for community development, I would think it would be on the lower side for the two recommended.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Cullen?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, the time estimate for us plays out to 100, 150 hours, and it's really strictly dependent on how controversial the proposals are. I have assumed that we will need to have a lot of civic engagement, and that means a big expenditure of time being responsive to people who like what we're doing, and responsive to people who don't like what you're doing. So I don't think the costs are inflated in the least, and they're directly related to the controversy of each issue.
So it seems like the inspection, the targeted inspection program is a bigger task than the other two items, perhaps. Maybe that's just my naive judgment or something. But is that, was that included in your cost for the city attorney's office, doing that work? Or is that in addition to these numbers?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that was not included. I understood that not to be a recommendation. The Anaheim program, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
We'll have to deal with issues about that. The Anaheim program is subsidized by the city government, it's not self-funding. So that's going to take some effort to make it streamlined and functional without expending more money than we have to.
If I understood it right, and I could have it wrong, the idea was that it was semi-self-funding in the sense that you were doing proactive enforcement, you were having fines and legal actions with those bad operators that would generate money, that would pay for additional enforcement. I think that was the theory behind the idea. I know that you have talked in the past about an increased enforcement effort from the city attorney's office that also would be paid for by fines and forfeiture. So I think this is aligned with that. I don't know whether you had saw it in those terms and had considered that in that respect.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we have not spent any time looking at new cost recovery methods. I think that is a significant issue that the council needs to grapple with. I'm not in a position to make a recommendation one way or another. Suffice it to say that there are cost recovery mechanisms we could develop, should the council be so inclined.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Thank you. I have two questions, and maybe they could be answered together, I'm not sure. But my first one is about the original intent of the task force. Was it just to address mass evictions, or was it also to address having to move out because your rent is increased at a more rapid rate than current incomes could keep up with? So that's one question. And then the other is, maybe you could explain to me a little bit more about the tiered displacement assistance? And I'm just thinking about the 1 to 5 units having no displacement assistance or mediation, and as we're moving maybe towards more ADU models, this, I think, will come up more, that you'll have a single unit, and that that tenant under this would have no protections. If you could address maybe both of those.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, the slide that I've just put up on the screen, that was council's direction to the task force. So it was to cover four distinct areas, and then any other alternatives except rent control.
Is that intended to address rising costs, or mass evictions? Or both?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
And then your question about the tiered approach, this was, this was the level that the task force was able to agree on. So there wasn't, there was no agreement for monetary assistance for 14 units or below.
Any insight into the thinking behind that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, this tiered approach was developed through our first subcommittee, which was, had the feedback from Mr. Jerry Morales of the Housing Authority, as well as Andy Alexander with the Board of Realtors. I don't want to put words in the mouth of the subcommittee, but there was an intention here to try to be measured in the application of specific remedies for different types or different densities of impact. The feeling was that the, in the mass eviction case, there were certain possible apartment houses or multifamily units that could either undergo rehabilitation or change hands, and that those were more likely to impact more people, and that was a significant target of their concern, whereas if they were looking at a 1, or a 2, or a 3, or a triplex, or something like that, those impacts, while significant to any given tenant, were not of the same magnitude as they were trying to address with these larger, higher-scale types of displacements.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, that was the questions I had. In that line, it goes into the, I was thinking of the 6 to 14 units, because it seems to me that 10 units displaced would have a pretty large impact. So is it just because they could, that they felt 15 was the number that was the best compromise they could come to? Or was there a discussion of possibly 10? Because I noticed that the next bullet point down, page 5 of our staff report, under the other tenant protection, that when it gets to 10 tenants displaced, there's a 90-day notification. So I was wondering if there were discussions on lowering that to the 6 to 14, to 10, rather than beginning the monetary at 15?
I would say that the, that the discussion was wide-ranging in terms of, there was some interest in going to the lower scale of this versus keeping it at a higher scale. But again, this was a, the subcommittee was driven by the need to compromise and find something that both the landlord perspective and the tenant perspective could agree to. In going through that exercise, we also looked at the provisions of, let's say, the condominium conversion ordinance. We looked at the wide range of existing regulations that are on the books now with the City of Santa Barbara to try to give us guidance. And from there, we approximated, or I should say, the subcommittee approximated what they thought could fly in terms of being responsive to the problem, yet balancing private property rights and all of the things that go along with these, trying to predict the future when you don't have enough information to know where these impacts might be taking place specifically in the city.
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? We'll go to public comment, and Tommy Thompson will be first.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Tommy Thompson, I'm a task force member, and actually representing the California Apartment Association today. I'm here with Fred Sutton, who's our new team member with the California Apartment Association, covering our Santa Barbara area. It was an honor to serve you on the task force, to serve our rental property owners here in Santa Barbara on the task force. Just in summary, we support the recommendations. I am not jumping for joy over the recommendations. I don't think any one of the task force members would probably stand before you and jump for joy. It was a long, hard negotiation over many months, and John Joseph should be thanked for his great work with Sue Gray. We had a lot of large personalities in that room, and a lot of opinions, but I think we had a okay product coming out of it, one that we can support as association. Sometimes I felt during that process, we were like the doctor treating a broken leg with Tylenol, because the broken system here, the broken problem, is you don't have enough housing in Santa Barbara, but we weren't addressing that situation. We weren't addressing supply. We're addressing some of the ramifications, some of the issues with supply, or lack of supply, and we were never addressing that broken leg. There are issues, there are certain problems in the City of Santa Barbara that we did address. I think some of these recommendations will help, but until you, until we build more housing in Santa Barbara, none of these things are going to be resolved. I do want to thank councilmembers Hart and Dominguez for your service on the task force. I think you were the assigned councilmembers there. Thank you for being there and your time that you served there, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks. Michelle Carbone is next, followed by Jay Hartz, and Frank Cox, and be ready to come on up. And I'll take speaker slips for another five minutes, and then we'll cut it off. Ms. Carbone, thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. My name's Michelle Carbone. I own two duplexes in the City of Santa Barbara, so I'm a mom-and-pop type shop. I support the task force's many months of efforts, including councilmembers, and I do support the two recommendations. I also believe that by accepting these bipartisan recommendations, and perhaps not allowing individual members to separately access you as individual lobbyists, I believe you'll be supporting the best interests of all your constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hartz?
Yes, thank you. I generally support the task force's recommendations. I have one concern, that is the notion that Mr. Rouse raised, or the issue that Mr. Rouse raised, having to do with mandatory leases. I don't oppose mandatory leases. I'm concerned about the notion of imposing a mandatory one-year term, particularly beyond a first term. I've always found that people's lives don't work in one-year segments. Month-to-month after first year has always been more flexible and more meaningful. Similarly, inspections, I think complaint-driven inspections are much more efficient and targeted. Doesn't create a whole new bureaucracy, and I think that's the way to go. Thank you.
Thanks. Frank Cox, are you here? Steven Battalia after him. Thanks.
First, I'd like to say I admire all of you for going through an election that is a battle, and so you are all battle-hardened. I'm a very small owner. We have about 15 units scattered around town. I bought my first units in 1965. I do all the work with my wife. My tenants are my friends. Our rents run anywhere from 10% to 20% below anybody else's, because we do all the work, and I bought early. You were talking about having perhaps inspectors come into my apartment. How many of you live, anyone here live in a rental? One. All of you, what would you think about a strange person walking into your house after making an appointment and investigating your house? Would that thrill you? And I think you would know the answer is no. The way I handle that is this: All my tenants have lists of people who work on properties. We have lots of plumbing problems in older units, and I use Carroll Plumbing. All my tenants, all I do is pick up the phone, call Carroll Plumbing. Carroll Plumbing comes very quickly, they know me well, and they fix whatever's wrong, they send me the bill. How easy. Nobody's invading their house, except people they know. And so, think about those things. Also, think about the small people like ourselves. It is very different when I see like the Mark out of the end of State Street. They're getting $3,000, $4,000 a unit, this giant thing. Do you really want to get rid of us? All my unit people are friends. I have been in small claims court, guess what? One time. 50 years. What was it for? One of the tenants accidentally, when they moved, took my refrigerator out of the unit. I took them to small claims court.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. That was two minutes. It goes by awfully fast, doesn't it?
It does, indeed. But anyway, think about the small unit operator.
Thanks. So, Mr. Battalia, it looked like Michelle Roberson wanted to give you time. Is she here? There you are, I see you. How are you, Michelle? Okay, you have four minutes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, first want to commend you for the vision to create this task force, and I think Sue Gray and Mr. Justice assembled a great team and representatives, both landlord and tenant side. I was able to attend a couple meetings and actually saw the conversation, and it was a very good, lively conversation, but in the end, again, Mr. Joseph was able to bring forward a set of unanimously agreed-to recommendations, and I commend him for that. I know, I think through the process, housing providers were concerned about some of the new regulations or restrictions that may be applied to them. I also know that some of the tenants' representatives were not as happy with what came out of it. They would have liked a little bit more. But in the end, I just want to quote Larry David, who was the writer and who was the co-developer on Seinfeld, and he said, "A good compromise, and when both parties are dissatisfied." And I think that's what we have here, is a good agreement between the parties. And so I wanted to just throw my support behind these recommendations. Thank you.
Thanks. Andy Alexander will be followed by, oh, Krista Pleiser is giving Mr. Alexander her time, so that's four minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Andy Alexander, president of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors, a local property manager, and member of the tenant landlord task force. I think you'll be happy, because we have not come out en masse, and we won't be taking much of your time today, because the recommendation package before you is vetted in depth by the task force, and we are all here in good faith. I thank the city council for understanding that this is a very complex issue, and that it required a task force to delve into the nuances. We met over the span of six months, and I was impressed with our discussions and the fact that we, both the tenant and landlord representatives, were able to reach consensus on a number of items. We all have the same goal, which is to protect and keep safe our tenant and landlord community, although each have different ideas on how to achieve this. At the conclusion of the task force, we all voted in good faith to recommend this package before you. Overall, we can be proud of this package, because we worked together as a community to reach compromise that will strengthen the city, instead of dividing it with divisive actions such as initiatives on the ballot, or one-sided government mandates. Our task force addressed complex issues, and although we are in full support, we have concerns with two of the recommendations, and I think everybody had, you'll be hearing, that had concerns with different parts. Ours were the inspection program, as well as the joint protection and accountability initiative. Rental inspection programs in other jurisdictions around the country are being thrown out because they have been found unconstitutional. Also, we are concerned that the joint protection and accountability initiative could balloon to include just cause measures in specific time periods for written agreements. Our letter goes in depth on our concerns regarding these two recommendations. Therefore, I will not take time now to explain them. Although I don't speak for the other members of the task force, I'm confident that they would agree with me, that we succeeded in carrying out the city council directives to come up with a package that addresses both the tenant and landlord's concerns over health and safety issues. Yes, you will hear that we all have concerns over some specific portions of the package, but overall, the group passed the majority of the recommendations unanimously and reached consensus, which many believed would never happen. This task force worked hard to achieve this, and I hope you can support this good-faith effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Lindsey, and Suzanne is giving you her time, so you have four minutes. And then Janet Eastman after you, and Bob Kleeman.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate the time, and understand how valuable your time is to be here for us this afternoon. We have a very unique problem in Santa Barbara. Everybody wants to be here, and we don't have enough housing for everybody. So I want to applaud the work by the task force over the last year. I went to some of the meetings myself, and I think they did a great job at compromising as well as they could, a very difficult situation, to protect the tenants, to protect the landlords. I come from a small mom-and-pop type operation myself, and so we try to do cost control ourselves, and we're fairly successful at it. What we find when you start adding bureaucracy to things is it becomes a burden to both sides of the party. At some point, if you're a tenant, you don't want a stranger in your place, as we heard earlier. Just like, as long as we're taking care of business, there shouldn't be a need for that sort of thing. However, you know, there's always a few bad actors in every scenario, and those are the ones you need to work with, and not pass broad expansive programs simply to deal with a minority problem. So as I asked about, I guess about nine months ago when this task force was created... So, as I asked about, I guess about nine months ago when this task force was created, those of you that are on the council and Madam Mayor, if you have a personal stake in this particular game, as either a landlord or as a tenant, I ask that you recuse yourself from the vote and allow people that don't have a fiscal or financial stake in this game to make their vote be heard, but you lay back and allow the others to be heard. So, I thank you for your time, and again, I recommend that you support the findings of the task force and adopt their plan as presently presented. Thank you.
Thanks, and I am cutting off the public comment. We took those last couple of slips because I hadn't made the announcement. Mr. Cullen, does anyone on the city council have to recuse themselves from this vote?
There are two sets of conflict issues you need to think about. The first arises under the California's Initiative Political Reform Act of 1974, which is the basic conflict of interest law. Under that law, month-to-month tenancies, if you are a month-to-month tenant, you don't have a conflict of interest concern. The only area where that might change would be if you were trying to do direct price control, which I don't understand to be part of the package. Secondly, under the common law, the general rule, and dated in its phrasing, is that no man can serve two masters, so no person can serve two masters. If you have an interest in tenants' rights by way of profession or volunteer work or association with a nonprofit entity that supports that, I could imagine a common law conflict of interest, and that's really left to you to be the judge about. So, number one, if you just have a month-to-month rental, you don't need to worry about the Political Reform Act, unless you're talking about direct price control, which you're not. And secondly, common law conflict of interest is really left up to your good judgment as to whether you can be fair.
Thank you for that clarification. Janet Eastman, are you here? Rob Queeman, and then Jim Stillwell. You have two minutes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Janet Eastman. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Santa Barbara Rental Property Association. And we, the Board of Directors and members of the Santa Barbara Rental Property Association, would like to thank Sue Gray and Andrea Bifano in particular, and the entire task force for their tireless work on these very important issues, and we support all of the task force's unanimous recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Queeman, I saw you here earlier. Did he go? He left? Okay.
Mr. Carter, ahead of leave.
Okay, very good. Mr. Stillwell, are you here? Oh, he was going to yield his time. Well, you can come up now yourself. He left too. Okay. Joyce Holspas, and I'm sorry if I'm not saying your name correctly.
I think they all yielded their time to me.
They left too? Okay.
They all yielded their time to her.
And.
Oh, okay, got it. Well, thank you for being short, then. Ms. Bodie, you're up next, followed by, well, no, Danielle Holzer, are you here?
She, yeah. No, she left.
Okay, then, okay, so Ms. Bodie, how about Jackie Huff?
I think, I see.
And you're giving your time to her. I just have to make sure you're in the room. Teresa Patino, are you here? Okay, so that's six minutes for you. Melissa Irwin, eight minutes for you. Okay, that's it. Is that it? Okay, you have eight minutes.
Well, you'd be glad to hear I'm only going to use a minute or two of them. I think we've tried your patience enough, and I'm basically here to say thank you to you all, Madam Mayor and the council, for giving us this opportunity, because you took what is normally an item that polarizes and rips apart a community, and I think we actually came together closer on this. In some ways, it was kind of like a family, where we were fortunate to have two great parents, if I can say, Sue and John. They're both looking perhaps a little haggard for the experience, like we all are, but we had very, very strong opinions on all sides, and these two were amazing in being able to provide guidance and patience to get us to come together. So, I think we were all really surprised, I could say stunned at the end, that we were able to come to a unanimous agreement, because certainly, for the first few months, it didn't look like we were going to make headway. So, thank you very much. And I thank my fellow task force members. We got to be good friends through this process with people like Petra I hadn't met before. And then, particularly, I'd like to thank Frank, because I think he had the hardest job out of all of this, and I know some of that job started after we made the agreement in November on these recommendations, that he, like I, had to go back to our members and help them understand why we had recommended this, and why we were asking them to make concessions. And it's been very difficult, I'm sure, for him, as it has been for me, to get all our members on board, and then I asked them not to come today and give their opinions unless they felt strongly about them, that we had already had the opportunity for debate and negotiation, and that time was over. We're just here to say, these are the results, and we've gone through it as a community. We're here to support it. We've worked together based on trust, that each side is going to honor their part, and that also, we're trusting city council, who does have discretion now in how you write the ordinances, that you'll honor the agreement that we came up to together. And thank you very much for the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Golis, are you here? And it looks like Mary Cochran wants to give you her time. Are you here, Ms. Cochran? No. John Cochran, are you here? Did you want to give your time to him, or do you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not going to take that long.
Four minutes? Four minutes?
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I'm fortunate enough to know a lot of you fellows for a number of years, and I'm Steve Golis. I'm one of the founders of Radius Group. We're a local commercial real estate company. Maybe you've heard of us. And I've been selling apartments for close to 40 years in the central coast. So, I've done apartments and known apartments, and I've known the good and bad of it on each side. I'm heavily involved in them in sense of helping with data. Sometimes, I can get misquoted in papers, because I get economic, I give economic forecasts on apartments, on economic forecasts on rents in the local area, because they think since I'm so old, I know it. So, I just want to say, I originally had a lot of concerns regarding the displacement requirements that were included in the final recommendations, but in consideration of everything that was put forth, I want to support the measure, and I specifically do not include just cause eviction. I am here to support the recommendations. However, as a side note, I'm concerned with just cause eviction, since this would require a negative impact on our property values. Again, as many people have spoken, we really need more housing, just really in California. California needs more housing. How we address that, I don't know. And most importantly, it will significantly and negatively impact investments into multifamily housing into Santa Barbara. And I think we all agreed, we need more housing in Santa Barbara. And I thank you for everything you've done. I think, I hear wonderful things about you guys, and had to listen to a lot of damage from both sides. I know it's not everybody jumping up and down on both sides, but it's a good compromise, and I think we just showed that as a community with the Montecito Mudslides. How can we all can come together and help people and be fair to everybody? And I brought a lot of people into my house that needed housing, didn't charge them a dime, and that's what our community does. We work out compromises, and I thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeremy Bassan, are you here? Come on up. Frank Rodriguez with Cause follows him, and then Charles Eckert. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, city councilmembers, I'm Jeremy Bassan. Let me begin by thanking you for your recent appointment to the Rental Housing Mediation Board. I truly appreciate this opportunity to serve and hopefully help work on some of these things as we move forward. I'm here to express support for staff recommendations that we move forward with mandatory written leases of any length agreed to by both parties, as well as relocation assistance for mass evictions. It's a very good step in the right direction, and I urge you to support it as well. As I listened to your question, Councilmember Sneddon, I wanted to bring up that, in many cases, relocation assistance is mandatory regardless of how many units are impacted. So, we already have relocation assistance when tenants are displaced for a new development, like an AUD project, and as far as, and I'm still new to the board, but as far as I know, if a developer wants to do a development on a piece of property, before they even start the permit application, they have to notify all of the tenants in that building that they are going to apply for a permit, and it also spells out what relocation is available to those tenants. So, that's in place. I think what is being discussed here in terms of mass evictions, and why it's at 15 units or above, is because what we've had happen in Santa Barbara in the past is, we've had large investors buy complexes of 15 or more apartments, and all of a sudden, increase the rents really quickly. They just raise the rents on everybody, and people have to move out. And I think that's what this is trying to keep from happening in the future. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
But I do have a question for Ms. Gray. So, we have, when a developer demolishes a property or wants to build something else, that's the trigger for displacement assistance, right, in the city of Santa Barbara?
Madam Mayor, you're correct. The protection that we have is, if a rental unit is lost because of a demolition, then there is, we do already have rent assistance for that.
And do we have assistance for rehabilitation, alterations?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Just demolition.
There's something we can take up. Okay. Frank, come on up. Frank Rodriguez, and then followed by Charles Eckert, and then Nick Gonzalez. You have two minutes.
Well, someone had put time for me. Did it not come up?
Oh.
I'll keep it.
You think you might have more time? I'll look through.
I'll just go. It's fine.
Oh, okay. Oh, Jazibey Sandoval, I see her back there. Oh, I see you. Thanks.
I don't know how fast I can read this.
Okay. Four minutes, then?
Well, thanks, everybody. Frank Rodriguez with Cause. So, I'm here, I'm speaking on behalf of Cause, and also speaking on behalf, as a human born and raised here, who went through this process as a task force member, and someone who's very concerned, as people have said, very opinionated on the tenant rights of people here in Santa Barbara. So, first, I do want to thank everybody in the city council and everybody in the task force for tackling an issue that is of the utmost importance, which is finding a solution, because we find ourselves in a growing real housing crisis here statewide, and we need to find ways to invest and really try to find solutions. So, I really thank everybody for tackling this difficult problem. And it is important to remember that Santa Barbara has had this community conversation before, with the creation of the Rental Mediation Task Force and Board back in 1976. It set the foundation for finding local solutions to our problems, especially concerning housing issues, and I'm glad that that is continuing to happen today. However, in the last few years, tenants are again raising their voice, because as much as we appreciate and value the Rental Mediation Task Force, and we really do, they can only go as far as the laws and the books provide them, or allow them. And in Santa Barbara, we lack the basic laws that we see across the country, such as to fight unjust evictions and the enforcement of safe living conditions, something that you've heard us continuously talk about, especially since the mass evictions that happened last year. Within the spectrum that divides this conversation between tenant rights and property rights, I felt the continual inability to push for tenant rights, not because I was not vocal, but because the task force process was not conducive to alleviate the power dynamic that is the root of the issue that brings us here to discuss the issue today. Having three professional lobbyists, and one of them a statewide organization, talking on issues on really property rights, and us being the local organization looking at tenant rights, I felt an imbalance in really bringing up issues and really personally attacked, and also not allowing our ideas to really be flourished and have a conversation on. However, it was an engaging conversation, to say the least, because tenant rights is a call for more accountability to the decision made by landlords in relationship to tenants, because these personal decisions impact someone's life. We are simply asking for a conversation that makes that process more accountable, and that was my continual push within the task force, especially upon the accountability segment, that we really wanted to create a way to use our local resources to make sure that we're creating more accountability between the tenant and the landlord. So, of course, we are also disappointed with what came out of the Tenant-Landlord Task Force because of the butting of heads during the process, because this would not have stopped what brought the city council attention to this issue, which was the cruel, that everyone saw as cruel, which was the eviction of dozen of Latino families from the Santa Barbara West Side that happened with the IV apartments after decades of tenancy there. So, we're not talking about an issue that came up in a year or two, but people that have been living there for decades, and especially during the holiday season. And also, how are we going to make sure that we're ensuring that we have safe living conditions? And I'm glad that there's a progress going on that, because we don't want landlords and really people taking advantage of having an older housing stock here in Santa Barbara. And so, I hope this issue is taken seriously, as I know it is, but just like The Independent was talking about and quoting about this, what came out of this, that there's no teeth to it. So, how can we really have a conversation to look at these issues, delve deeply into them, because I think that's what we really deserve. And lastly, as we all know, we're missing one council member here in the seat, someone from the West Side, where Kathy Moody, our mayor, was before. And this is where this company that evicted mass eviction IV apartments, this is the seventh time they've had a property built here, and all of them are in the third district. So, we see a lot of the face of gentrification is happening, especially to the Latino community in the West Side. So, it's like, how do we really delve into that issue? Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Charles Eckert, followed by, we need to hear everybody, so if you could hold your applause. Thanks. So, Mr. Eckert, followed by Nick Gonzalez, and then Michael Kyle.
Madam Mayor, congratulations to you on your election to that post you now hold.
Thank you.
And to our new councilpersons, congratulations to both of you, too. I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Santa Barbara Rental Property Association. Let me fly my flag, so I am identified. I do not own any rental units in the city of Santa Barbara. Nonetheless, I have followed with great interest what has gone on with this council and with the task force. And I suggest to you that this group of people who made up the task force, although not coming up with recommendations to the satisfaction of everybody, as you've just seen, did come together and come forward with some specific recommendations, and I suggest to you that these are considered recommendations, and they should not be shoved aside willy-nilly without giving a chance to see whether or not they work. So, again, in conclusion, please do accept the recommendations of this task force and give them a chance to work. Thank you for this chance to talk to you.
Thanks. Mr. Gonzalez, are you here? Here he comes. Michael Kyle will follow him. Daniel Renteria, you have two minutes.
Madam Mayor, city council, I am here today to support the task force recommendations. I'm a small rental property owner. I am also a member of the Santa Barbara Rental Property Association and a member of the Board. Initially, I was very concerned. As a small rental operator, I was very fearful of what would come out, because like many of my peers sitting here today, the majority are small operators, and we depend on the rental property as a significant part of our livelihood, just as the tenants depend upon us to provide them with a health and safe environment. That being said, I'm satisfied. I think you're in a very unique position today, in that usually, you're playing referee. I believe that there was a lot of effort, and there was a successful outcome of mutual respect and agreement, and you have the opportunity to carry that forward, and I commend you for taking the time and trying to resolve this, and having us owners sit with the tenants. I was once a tenant, so I understand their plight, and I think that we've come up with something that is agreeable to all. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Kyle, are you here? Come on up.
Hello, Madam Mayor and the council. My name is Michael Kyle. I'm a student at UCSB. I also intern and work for ASME 3299, a union on campus that represents service workers and patient care technicians. Our members have, used to live in the Santa Barbara area, Alavista and Galita, but over the years, especially the past 10, 15 years, have been pushed out to Lompoc, Copenteria, Ventura, some of them have even lost their homes in the recent fire. And a lot of this has been the absolute backwards laws across Santa Barbara City and the whole county in reference to rent control, just cause evictions and the such, that have allowed so many people to be pushed out. Our unions represent 25,000 workers across the state, 50% of them Latinx, and over 85% of them people of color, and around every UC area, they are constantly pushed out. And I just see a further replication of, further. And I just see a further replication of, furthering of this, let's be honest, violence uprooting people's lives to be pushed out so hard in this task force. We have three landlords who represent maybe, what, 50, 100 people, and three tenant representatives who represent hundreds of thousands. And that balance fallacy just does absolutely nothing to make up for the complete power imbalance already present in these landlords who honestly act as parasites and taking away people's money just for the ownership of a home, and are coming to you saying that we need even more housing, whereas 10 years ago, we had so many more workers who were able to live here. If there's going to be more housing, let it be cooperatives. Don't let these people take more power, and don't let them have so much control over this task force, in which you can already see that the amount of power they have when they're able to uproot an entire family's life and dozens of families' lives without even giving a reason. So I really want to make a push to keep just cause in your hearts and to really consider the power dynamics at play here in the task force such as this. Thank you.
Thanks. Daniel Renteria, are you here? Come on up, followed by Maya Hawthorne? Hythorn?
She's not here today.
Oh, she didn't?
Yeah.
Okay. And then Mickey Flax will follow you.
Okay. Good afternoon, City Council members. I am Daniel Renteria. I'm the president of the Isla Vista Tenants Union, and I'm here to show my support for tenants' rights and advocate for more tenant protections and rights for in Santa Barbara. In addition, in Isla Vista community alone, Ivy TIOs dealt with numerous mass evictions of Latino families, unjust evictions, and low vacancy rates, which leads to soaring rents. We understand that there is a housing crisis in California, and we believe that elected officials are the best advocates for tenants, because you have the ability to change the law. Today, we are pleading for a just cause ordinance as an extension of tenants' rights and protections in Santa Barbara. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mickey Flax, you have. Gabriel Lucatero, are you here?
No. Nope. There he is.
Oh, there you are. Thanks. Hi. Jacquelineinda, I see you. Dick Flax is here. Linda Honigman.
I'm giving my time. Of course.
He better.
You have up to 10 minutes.
How do you like that? I'm not going to take them all, I hope.
Go ahead.
It's appropriate that I follow the Isla Vista Tenants Union representative, because I was on a county task force that drew up a county ordinance on just cause evictions. That ordinance has been in effect since 2010. I don't know how many times it has been used. One of the things that it missed that we had originally proposed was that there be a clock kind of a way to count how many times it was used and by whom, and were there bad apples, landlords and tenants, whatever. Anyway, that never happened. So I don't know, but I haven't heard any screaming from Isla Vista, so I think it has worked when necessary. And I think you could do very well, in addition to accepting the recommendations of the task force, to look at County Ordinance 4440 or 41 or something. It's the tenant relocation, just cause eviction ordinance. It provides relocation benefits unless there's a change of use to non-residential from residential use. Otherwise, the landlord is required to provide alternative housing, if, for instance, there's demolition to be done, and there has to, or if there's a notice or order to vacate from a building official because of a health and safety concern, that also triggers a relocation. The benefits include three months' rent and the security deposit, or $7,000, whichever is greater, and it has to be paid within 90 days of the permits, 90 days of when the permits for demo or rehab are issued. Now, they did findings before passing this ordinance, and the findings included a reduced availability of rental housing, big news, code violations found in the county in this case, which threaten health and safety, big news, that many tenants do not have the financial resources to deal with relocation, again, big news, and that in mass evictions like happened in the Ivy tenants, the Ivy Apartments, the Ivy Y Apartments in the city, which had happened in Isla Vista Apartments that triggered this ordinance, you have many people looking for new rentals at once, further restricting the ability to find them. And in justifying, whatever it's called, no, well, one of their findings, I'd like to read to you, since I have the 10 minutes. The relocation benefit obligations imposed on property owners by this chapter partially mitigate the financial hardships faced by displaced resident households. The benefits are calculated to provide for the expected cost of locating new housing, including a security deposit and rent for the first and last months of the tenant's new lease. In the case of a health-related or safety-related code violation, they also have the additional purpose of encouraging owners to maintain their properties in habitable condition. The level of payments provided in this chapter are similar to those provided to resident households located as a result of government-sponsored rehabilitation programs in some other locales and reflect the annual relocation costs likely to be incurred. So they're not numbers picked out of a hat. They reflect the conditions as the county saw them, and I'm submitting that those conditions certainly haven't changed and have always been true or recently been true in the city and have, in fact, gotten worse. A second purpose that they don't mention, but that was clearly talked about, was of the relocation assistance, was to disincentivize evictions that would require relocation payments. A landlord might think twice of threatening and evicting tenants to get a small increase in the rent, which they can't pay, so they are evicted, if he has to pay relocation expenses. And leases will help prevent that as well. I would suggest that we have two models that we could use to create a just cause ordinance that makes sense. We have the condo relocation ordinance, which provides, I mean, the condo conversion ordinance, which provides relocation assistance in the case of, which happened here, an apartment house being converted to condominiums. That could be a model. Certain things we have to change, of course, but it could be a model. And I would add something that hasn't been mentioned, that evictions should not be permitted except, there are 16 reasons for eviction listed in the state, the state code of whatever it is, wherever real estate law is in the state code. None of those, if evictions were to happen for any of those reasons, there's no relocation funds, there's no burden on the landlord, if a tenant is a bad tenant, doesn't pay the rent, if there's crime going on in the apartment, if there are drugs going on in the apartment, all those kinds of things are in the state law and would not be part of a just cause eviction ordinance. In fact, the name "just cause eviction" tells you that there are just causes for eviction, and the recommended policies would not apply when one of those causes is invoked. It's when they're not for those reasons. The reasons that we have found in the community are no leases, so the landlord decides that he wants to, he has expenses too, so he wants to jack up the rent. He will then make, and I use "he" advisedly, although I know there are some women involved, he will then make, institute increases, sometimes up to 100%. I don't know how anybody can do that and not be ashamed, but they will do that. They will come and say, if you're paying $800 today, next month you have to pay $1,600. That is an unjust eviction. That is something that cannot live in a city that prides itself on being a community where the majority are renters. That cannot be a case where property rights affect the living rights, the right to life and liberty, which come first, that is being interfered with when landlords make these kinds of evictions. So the one I would add, as I said, that after the, that evictions, unless they're part of the 16, should take place only at the end of the school year. It is children who are forced to go to a different school, as well as a different neighborhood, who suffer the most in this kind of situation. So what we're talking about is human suffering compared to, yes, property rights. That's right. Landlords will say, it's my property, I make a living out of it, I have a right to do whatever I want with it. And originally, that was true, really, with rentals, even from medieval times on. But we don't live in medieval times, and we have passed many laws, many restrictions on the rights of owners. Tonight on television, there's a documentary film about the Triangle Fire, Triangle Certwaste Fire in New York in 1911, I think 11. It was after that fire that laws about safety in industrial situations were passed. It took the fire and the killing of over 100 young women to make sure that the fire doors would not be locked and that safety laws would be invoked, to mess with the property rights of the owners of factories. Well, I'm submitting to you that the right to a home is one of the basic rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and it should not be easily messed with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Flax. Rosaline, no applause, please, followed by John Beardsmore, Michael Lynch, and the last speaker will be Brendan Yadegari. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rosaline Aka. I am an undergrad student at UCSB, as well as an intern for ASME, a local labor union that supports or represents UC workers. I'm just going to make this short and simple. I am here to oppose the recommendations that have been presented to us today, and I'm here in support for just cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Beardsmore, are you here?
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is John Beardsmore. I'd like to thank John Justice and the task force for the work that they did on the agreement. I support most of it, however, I'm still kind of not sure about the one-year lease. I know a lot of my tenants, I always offer them a one-year lease, but life is always changing, so a lot of them don't want that, so I think you should consider that. And also inspections required. I know I wouldn't want somebody coming into my house, so, and I know a lot of tenants that I have, don't want people going in their property, so I think you need to look at also mandatory inspections. Thank you.
Thanks. Michael, come on up. And Brendan Yadegari, are you here? Okay. You have two minutes. Ms. Lynch.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm coming representing myself. I am a landlord. I do own property in Santa Barbara. I've also been a tenant for many years in Santa Barbara, and I want to speak in support of tenants' rights. I am not concerned about property rights. Yes, I own a piece of property. I'm not concerned about the value of the property. I really don't think there will be a significant impact on property values or the interest of developers in putting money into Santa Barbara. It's got a huge, this is a huge market here. We're not, I really don't think we're going to discourage too much. I do think there's a significant imbalance of power when we're talking about the task force, as was discussed by two people, and I am very concerned about that. And lastly, I want to say I very much support just cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker, come on up.
Hi there. My name is Brandon. I just speak for myself today. I'm a West Side resident, and first, I just want to congratulate all the new council members and the new mayor. It was really exciting to be involved a little bit in the elections process and see y'all debate and talk about your ideas and how to see up here today. So I really hope my landlord isn't watching. If he is, hi, John. And I say that because one of the things that came up today and that has come up through this whole process is inspections. Everyone's been saying, oh, well, if I were a tenant, I wouldn't really want some strange person coming into my home. Well, I'll tell you, I'm a tenant, and I would love a strange person to come into my home, because I really feel in a lot of circumstances that I can't go to my landlord and say, hey, can you do this for me? Hey, I think there's mold in the bathroom. Hey, can you fix that? I think it's a health issue. Because I'm constantly afraid that he's going to raise the rent, as he did on the 1st of December, and the Thomas fires followed a few days after. So that's not to mention maybe a price gouging issue where the rent has gone up 15 or 20%, which exceeds the state law of 10% in a disaster scenario. I guess most of all, I just want to ask that the new council, the council that's new since this task force was put into place, expand your imagination. We're sitting here today looking at a proposal from a task force that was formed under different leadership, under different guidance. There's a lot of new blood here today at the council, and there's a lot of new people involved municipally after the recent election that I've seen. And I think there's a lot of new, good ideas, and I think we can talk about how both sides are more equally represented in a new forum or place for dialogue, because there obviously is a power imbalance. 50/50, you have landlords and you have tenants, but 50/50 is not the makeup of tenants and landlords in the city of Santa Barbara. And lastly, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, I speak English and I have the ability to be up here and advocate for myself, but that's not the case for a lot of residents in Santa Barbara, so I hope we can take that into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks. Okay. It's to the council, and if you have questions that came up during the public comment, this is the time to ask. You could organize your thoughts related to the recommendation package. And Mr. Friedman, you're first.
Just have a, I'm going to, for my comments, but just a clarifying question on the one year. It's not requiring a one-year lease. It requires to offer it, but it's my understanding, but they can enter into a shorter agreement if they want to, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, yes, you are correct. It would be to require the landlord to offer a minimum one-year renewable lease.
Is that it? Okay. Mr. Hart, and then Ms. Sneddon.
Well, I just want to thank the folks that were involved in this directly. They spent a lot of time on this, and it was not easy. I attended a number of meetings. Mr. Justice did an incredible job with Ms. Gray on trying to steer a difficult conversation with complicated power dynamics. Folks have used that word. And I think they did a great job. It is not perfect. It is the classic political compromise where probably no one is how happy. But it is progress, and that is something that's measurable and real and is something we should all be proud about. We can try to do a lot, but having a consensus to start with, and I do see this as just the start. I don't know that this is necessarily the end of this conversation, but the beginning of the conversation. And it was a good beginning to the conversation, because people's perceptions and their views about the different partners in this relationship evolved over time. And I know that from having talked to the people at the beginning and having talked to them at the end. Folks became more aware. We did not get everything that everybody would want from this process, but we got two significant things that staffers are recommending that we move forward with today, and a number of other things that I think are equally important, too, that are not necessarily on the agenda today, but were recommendations of the task force. I think there's, and I think that the task force was really creative in looking at the safety inspection, the health and safety inspection issue, because the one-size-fits-all, we're going to have everybody submit to mandatory inspections, is one approach that is very controversial and very difficult and causes folks on both sides of that equation to get upset. The compromise recommendation that I think Mr. Thompson identified, the Anaheim idea, where you start with folks who have a history where you start with folks who have a history and a pattern of being problems, and you go after them, because there are limited resources in the city's organization to do things, and focusing that effort on the place where we know there are problems makes sense. That's a good allocation of resources. And I do think there is an opportunity for a revenue stream to be created from that that can assist the city attorney's office in doing additional enforcement. You know, the city attorney has taken that responsibility on in a very high-profile case that has been extraordinarily time-consuming and expensive and difficult, and I think it points out how complex that process is and that it requires a revenue stream to support, to do, to take to the next level, to get to some really bad situations that exist that are not, we have not had the resources historically to go after. So I want to look at, you know, from my personal view, I want to look at how we can work together, as long as we can work together, going as far as we can with this consensus model, because there's a lot of work to do that is agreed by both parties. I think we'll get to a point where that is done, and there will be probably a need to have additional conversations and see how much further that conversation can go. But I do think respecting the people that were involved in this process, respecting the compromises that were made, respecting the difficulties that all of the folks who were part of this process had in going back to their constituencies and selling these compromises. I know there were very difficult conversations in both camps about the agreements that were made by the people that were in the room, and I think it's important for the council to respect that process, to honor it in a way, and to codify it, and to move forward as fast as we can to begin to implement these things, because I want to see concrete changes on the ground. Having tenants have the option to have a lease and to have that protection is really important. Having the tenant relocation assistance for the folks that we're talking about is really important and really valuable. So I would just make a pitch, you know, having been one of the two council liaisons that participated in this, that we be cognizant of that process and the folks' investment in that, and really honor that by our actions tonight.
Thanks. Councilmember Sneddon?
Thank you. I first have a question. If accepting the recommendation of the task force, does that mean that the next step would be for those two issues to go to ordinance, and then at ordinance, we would have the option or discretion to take some of those recommendations and balance some of them out? Is that the next step if we accept staff recommendation or recommendation of the task force?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, I believe that is the case. Yes.
That's what staff's recommending. Mr. Klon?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, your municipal code requires and says specifically that, with a few exceptions, the ordinance committee shall initiate drafting of all ordinances. And that leads me to just something I'd like to ask you to think about while you're working. We've all heard the expression, "The devil's in the details." The problem is, that makes me the devil most of the time.
Okay.
So to the extent you have specifics that you wanted to be really helpful, I view these proposals as highly conceptual and subject to a lot of interpretation. My goal is to serve you well, not to inject my own sense of what's right or wrong, so the more direction you can give us, the better. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else?
Yes, thank you. So I think there is enough debate about just cause and enough discussion about it that I would like to see that part of the direction or discussion that we have either today or at ordinance. I don't think that that's a settled topic, not even in the recommendations was that settled. So I don't see that as a, to just put that away yet. I don't really see in this package being addressed that rates could still be increased rapidly. That's a question I had about the original intent of the task force. I don't see that being addressed here. I see mass evictions addressed. I see displacement fees, but not really just that the increase of rent can just be so fast that a tenant can't keep up and has to move. I would like to see that addressed in some form. And then as far as inspections go, I think it's all a matter of perspective. They're considered invasive if they're in the interests of the landlord. I had this when I was renting, that landlords kept coming in to have their property reassessed for new mortgage rates, and they could come in any time, it didn't matter what we were doing, but I would welcome someone to come in to inspect for my safety, or to paint, or to make an improvement. That's not really an invasion in the same way, just depending on the perspective of who's doing the, coming into the property. So I think inspections, I like the inspections, and I like that for the reasons of retaliation, I like that they would be regularly spaced. I think maybe they could just be under complaint, but I think you made a very good point, that if you have to ask for an inspection to come in, that it brings up different issues.
Mr. Rouse, and then Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, once again, kudos to the process and to the task force that you, the time you put in. My attorney always said to me, "Yes, a good agreement is one that both sides walk away from unhappily," which I really hate that about attorneys in general, to be honest with you. But, so everybody's unhappy, so I guess we've got a good deal. Going through this kind of categorically, the thing about inspection, for example, the important thing is to have tenants and landlords both have as much information going in as possible. And tenants should understand their rights, and landlords should understand their responsibilities, and vice versa. We have shown, this agency has shown a lot of due diligence in going after some very high-profile, bad landlords, the kind of landlords that a lot of people in this room are probably colored by because of guys like this that perform the way they do. And Mr. Klon has made a point out of publicly going after some of these folks. I think for the ability for a tenant to report and to not face reprisal is important, but by the same token is, some kind of a mandatory inspection or some kind of invasion of home privacy, I don't think is warranted, nor do I think is practical. So I don't think we need to go to that direction, but I think the initial education and information for landlords and tenants is going to be a big key of this, and I believe you addressed that in the task force as well. People that own properties and decide to put them in the rental market, and they always talk about fishermen and farmers being providers, well, in fact, people that do that are providers as well, providing rental property. If we make things onerous, or we make it too onerous, to where we disincentivize it to the point where those decisions are made otherwise, and what happens in other big rent-controlled communities, is that somehow you face a diminution of rental property inventory. Everybody in this room agrees that there is a housing rental inventory, a lack of rental inventory in a community that is largely renters. So what we don't want to do is make it so onerous and take any incentive away to either buy property and put it in the rental market, to take property that you own, put it in the rental market, or to redevelop property and make it better. There is a lot of properties that are distressed and actually need redevelopment. So this attends, this task force intends to address a lot of that. But if we make it so it's impossibly complex or onerously expensive, those properties will begin to go away, and that's happened, it's happened in condo conversions for sale from old apartment buildings in other areas, and we don't want to do it here. Every time a government agency gets involved in trying to tweak a private sector market, it's fraught with complications and usually isn't very successful, whether it's a farm subsidy, wage subsidies, or wage floors, wage ceilings, or housing. So this is best handled, not by making ordinances or solutions, this is best handled in task force. This body took a, to the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, which used to have to come up and basically beg for their funding every year through the block grant, and we made that, we made that funding permanent, and made Andrea Baffano a permanent employee so that they could be there, because both sides agreed that this was a really valuable thing. So I still firmly believe in both sides, and both sides come here to the table, and I think sometimes if you put on a third party's mandates, that sometimes that stops the conversation. I believe the task force, or the Rental Mediation Housing Task Force, starts a conversation. I think that's more important, that these private sector arrangements, tenant and landlord, can happen in the private sector with, certainly there are certain protections, but not onerous layers of protections. I personally, if we go to ordinance with any of this, I'm certainly going to want, Mr. Klon, a pretty detailed synopsis of what existing laws are and what's out there for, on both sides already. And I don't think we had that today, because once again, this is still rather amorphous. But I do want to say that if we're concerned about the supply of housing, then we have to make it not only available, but we have to make it, we have to make it desirable to be a part of that. We have a housing authority that's done extremely well, and we have, what, 15% of our housing is affordable by covenant or by subsidy, which is tremendous. But we don't have the funding to go forward and make more housing along those lines. If you want to shut down the development of these new projects on the books, and we thought about, wow, the ADA went, the AUD is going too fast, or it's going too quickly, well, we could adopt something like this and shut it down tomorrow, because the private sector will say, "Wait a minute, we're not going to do this." So we have to move carefully. We can't move precipitously in making a new ordinance. We have to continue talking, we have to continue being in the room, and we have to continue having all sides represented stakeholders on both sides. And even though, yes, there's fewer landlords and there are tenants, I get that number, but that doesn't mean the stakeholders don't have voices and they cannot be represented and talk. So I congratulate you. I think you guys did a good job. I don't think, as Mr. Hart said, I don't think this conversation is over, but I don't want to also stop talking by creating some law that's going to lay a new layer of regulation expense that's going to eventually cost us the inventory and potentially raise the rents that we have today.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez.
I want to start by thanking the task force, the six volunteer members, Petra Lovin, and Jerry Morales, and Frank Rodriguez, and then also Laura Bodie, and Tommy Thompson, and Andy Alexander, for putting in hours and hours and hours of time and resources. And you heard a little bit from them that it was an emotionally charged situation and a lot of back and forth, and someone thanked Mr. Hart and I, but we did nothing. We just watched you guys and encouraged you, and we're happy that you guys were able to hammer out a compromise. There's definitely a power dynamic imbalance, but on the other hand, the landlord side did come forward and agree to several things. They could have just said no to everything, and then we'd basically be back to square one. So it sounds like there's a pretty strong consensus to allow the ordinance committee to take over and move several of the task force recommendations, some of the agreed-upon recommendations forward, which sounds great. Mr. Klon asked for some further specifications or further guidance. My only thing to him would be on the last paragraph of the agenda report, I'd say option three, which is put it in the queue, and that's all I have for now. And also thanking, I thank the task force, but I include you, Mr. Justice, and then Ms. Gray also for the hard work, and all of you who came out today and have been sending us emails or calling us. Thank you for your community engagement, and I'd say, don't stop here in terms of this issue, but jump in on any other issues where you think you can help the city, your neighborhood, your community, make it a better place. Get involved in city committees, boards, raise your level of civic engagement if you're interested in that. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez, you said option three? I'm sorry, I wasn't following you. What, did you mean numeral three of the eight?
No, that was just to Mr. Klon about the last budget financial information paragraph.
Oh, okay. Mr. Friedman, go ahead.
Well, first, I too want to thank everyone who participated in this process. It was a, I went and read all the minutes from your task force, and it was very contentious, but you worked through those issues. And I too am not jumping at this. My legs are starting to cramp because I've been sitting here so long. But what I want to say is that there's concerns that I have, too. I would, it's no secret, I would tend to agree more with Frank Rodriguez on just cause and stronger protections, but I think in government, we have an obligation when the people lead the way and show that there's a compromise that's taking place, that we have an opportunity and responsibility to really listen to that. And what I saw here today was, there was a lot of, mentioned that Larry David, unhappy people, so it's probably a good thing, and that's where I'm at right now. Of course, I'd want to do more. I think I kind of indicated on that number of 15, I would personally like to lower that number. But my concern is that if we start tweaking this here right now and changing it around, we're going to lose the good faith of the landlords, and we need your voices to go forward, because we're never going to solve these issues. One, we're never going to be able to build enough housing, but there's a supply issue. But we're not going to be able to have an open dialogue to try to get through these, and Councilmember Hart said this is a start. I also appreciate the comments of Councilmember Rouse, because there is a concern that when we start regulating more, that you have these unintended consequences that could come out. So I'm willing to trust in this process to continue to do that, and the good faith effort that everyone brought forward, and I think that we do need to give an opportunity for these recommendations to succeed, and at that point, we can continue to have those conversations. So the question I had was, we have two that are before us. Correct if I'm looking at, it's the Joint Protection Accountability Initiative, and then the Tenant Displacement and Relocation to move forward, but we said that the first three, which are the enhanced mediation, those could go forward as well, and those don't need an ordinance. And I want to hear from staff if that would create, and we'd have to shift additional priorities, because I think this is such an important issue, that the more we could do on those, since they seem to be less labor-intensive or staff-intensive, if we could move those other three forward? Or would there be additional costs, and would you recommend that we stay with just the two that you're recommending?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, I believe that the first three can be done with the existing staff resources.
So the first three plus the two that you're recommending?
Not the two, not the extra.
No, but I mean, if we provided the extra resources to do the two.
Yes.
So basically, we could move forward today with five totals if we provide the extra resources.
Correct.
I'm prepared to go with those five.
Thank you. Well, my opinion hasn't changed, that the city needs a just cause eviction ordinance. And you, property owners would have a whole suite of just causes. Someone didn't pay rent, they committed crimes, they destroyed property. I believe there's protections that would be included in such an ordinance. And I am somewhat speaking for the West Side, even though we have that empty seat over there, and I know what a hardship it was on people. And if we're looking at adding to the displacement relief, I would be happy to have that conversation. Someone should get more time if they're evicted. I like 120 days. You know, that's going to be hard in this housing climate. I think the number 15 is too high. I think there should be relocation assistance, monetary assistance for six units or more. Imagine three or four people living in a unit. It's not just one person in one unit. So six units is six times four, that's 24 people that are displaced in this housing market. So I'm in agreement with Councilmember Sneddon, and this is a new council, and we can take this a new direction. It's a new year. But what hasn't changed is the difficulty of being a renter in the city of Santa Barbara. So I'm supportive of the first three recommendations, and I'm glad to hear that that educational aspect would be an easy thing to launch. Sure, Joint Protection and Accountability Initiative, and the Tenant Displacement and Relocation Assistance for Mass Evictions. Let's do send that to the ordinance committee. And keep in mind that we have 58, 60% of the people who live in And keep in mind that we have 58, 60% of the people who live in the city of Santa Barbara are renters, and that they need protections. So I will entertain a motion. Mr. Hart?
So I will move that we advance the staff recommended items to the ordinance committee, and that includes staff taking, using existing resources to address the first three items that are in the staff report. And I would hope that we would do that by reprioritizing existing resources to advance that in this fiscal year. And I don't know how you propose for us to make that decision about the reallocation of resources, if that's something that would be coming up in our budget discussion that we're having, our planning workshop?
Mr. Casey or Mr. Buell?
Madam Mayor, may I address that first?
Mr. Klon.
For the sake of terminology, I read the report as the staff recommendations being two items on the first page. And so as we get to the menu on the later pages, maybe we could refer to them by number.
Okay, well, let's see. We're talking about the, I don't know that they're ordered the way you described, because there are Enhanced Rental Mediation Program and Education Initiatives Recommended Package, one and two, and three, and then there's the mandatory leases and the health and seconds? Oh, so you're looking at the staff report, I'm looking at the attachment, okay. These two bullet points. But the other things that staff, yeah, the Joint Protection Accountability Initiative, mandatory leases, and tenant displacement and relocation assistance for mass evictions, those are the two substantive things to be sent to the ordinance committee. The other items that are part of the recommended package, staff is just going to go ahead and implement, which are numbered one, two, and three on pages three and four of the staff report. Okay. That was what my motion was.
Before we clarify your motion, Mr. Buell, did you have something to add, sir?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, with respect to priorities and funding, we would be coming back to you. You're going to be going into a joint meeting, for example, with the Planning Commission later on in the winter. You'll also be going into initial budget discussions in February. And it's in the context of those meetings that we'll be able to lay out for you perhaps a little bit more clearly as to how priorities would be shifted in order to fit this into the existing work programs in both the Community Development Department and the City Attorney's Office. Looking at the costs, it would range somewhere between $35,000 to $135,000 roughly is what's spelled out in the agenda report, and we would provide additional detail for you at that time.
If I could just try to clarify that to make sure we're all on the same page. What we're saying is we'll come back with an item, but you've got a lot of workload policy priorities on our plate, some that we're not being active at getting to yet, because, you know, the alcohol policy, we still have on our plate. If you want to make this a priority, we're going to have to bring back some options of some of those items that we're going to have to defer to move this into a higher position as a priority. And with this information, we'll be able to give you a better dollar number about the assistance that we'll need, and fine-tune that number and get it much tighter.
When is that planning workshop?
You know, Madam Mayor and council, we'll regroup after today and see if that's the right forum to have it, maybe initial conversation, but ultimately, we've got to bring it back to a council agenda item, and have you set our priorities and also give us the funding authority.
Mr. Klon, you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, some of it, we're not even sure what it is. The state has undertaken now a full-on attack on local government land use planning. So in our office, we're trying to dedicate time to what I would call advanced planning to address those issues. So at this point, I'm not even sure I know the full menu of what the state has pushed us to do in 2017 even. So there may be more work items than we're even aware of, that's what I'm saying, at least on the land use side.
Mr. Hart, or Ms. Sneddon, did you have a comment?
I'm comfortable with this not being the top of the list today, and pushing other things out and waiting until we have our budget workshops to decide what our priorities are. I mean, we've shaken things up quite a bit with the new council and new priorities, and I'm comfortable with waiting until we have those meetings and budget discussions to decide where this goes in the list, but that we still move forward with, that it will be on the list of what we're addressing. And we are short a member that would be a really valuable voice as we're crafting this.
Good point. Mr. Rouse, did you, I was going to ask Mr. Hart to restate his motion. Did you have, okay. Thanks.
Okay, I would move that we forward to the ordinance committee, development of a Joint Protection and Accountability Initiative, mandatory leases, and tenant displacement and relocation assistance for mass evictions, and have staff advance items one, two, and three in the staff report that are described on pages three and four of the staff report.
Okay, so that was Mr. Friedman seconding it, and did you say it's going to the ordinance committee?
I did say that.
Okay. Mr. Rouse, did you have a comment on the motion?
Yeah, yes, Madam Mayor, I do. Going back to Mr. Friedman's comments, which I appreciate, is that I think, whatever we do and what are we having in our thought processes, we need to be really respectful of the work and the conclusions that the task force came up with. I think they, once again, we're trying to parse this up here right now, and I don't think that's particularly fair to the process that everybody went through. And something, yeah, so I mean, I can forward the recommendations to talk about. However, there are things that are going to depend on what is standing law and what's in front of us, and Mr. Klon was talking about, like just cause eviction. I don't know that we even be prepared to have, we don't even have the tools at this point to even discuss that in a cogent way, as far as I can tell.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Klon?
Just with respect to the motion, I want to help the council if I can. There were two add-ons that I don't know whether they are included in Councilmember Hart's motion. One was that Mayor Perterm Rouse asked for a kind of background report on existing regulations under state and local law to accompany the report to the ordinance committee. That should be in the motion if you all want it. And secondly, Councilmember Dominguez identified a priority in terms of how we approach this, namely, for us as staff to handle it and not directly contract for a bunch of assistance. So if those are part of the motion, that would be good to know. That's one of the areas, you know, we've had some trouble where individual council members have an idea, and it's not necessarily encapsulated in the motion, so that's why I'm pushing you a bit on it. I'm sorry.
To precisely address those two ideas, I think it would be a good idea for the ordinance committee to have in context what the existing state law is, so I think that makes sense. But I thought we agreed that we were going to have a future discussion about the priorities. So if Councilmember Dominguez is insisting on making that decision tonight, I don't support that, I'm not including that in my motion.
We can take that up after. So the secondor of the motion, do you agree that, okay?
I'm fine with Councilmember Hart's change to the motion.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Sneddon?
Just that, I was looking it up before this meeting, it's on the California government website, Better Business Bureau. It's a really simple bullet point list of just causes, and there are things like violence and abuse and destruction of property, and really clear guidelines on that, that all seemed, I don't know, to me, really reasonable and easy to look at. And then within that, there were other cities that have their own, I mean, I'm, you know, correct me there, but that have their own ordinances, you know, San Jose, Santa Cruz, different cities that have their own ordinances to go along with that. So just cause, I think, is sort of a boilerplate, and it's for pretty just causes. I mean, they were, and it's one page on the website to look at, so it's not hard to get it together before our next ordinance.
More layers of law and a private sector relationship isn't always better, though, so I want to make sure that we're not laying over other people's laws and concepts.
Well, I did want to make a response to what you were saying, Mr. Rouse, about honoring the recommendations coming forward. Of course, that's our goal. I do honor the work that they did. I do believe there was an imbalance that happened at that level, and people are saying that everyone's unhappy. I think some people are more unhappy than others. And I will keep that in mind as I go forward. So, Madam Clerk, please restate the motion.
The motion is to forward to the ordinance committee development of the Joint Protection and Accountability Initiative and Tenant Displacement and Relocation Assistance for Mass Evictions, including provision of information about existing state law to the ordinance committee, to additionally have staff advance items one through three in the staff report that are described in pages three and four of the staff report.
And we will, at the ordinance committee, have an update from the city attorney on laws pertaining to, did you say that and I missed it?
Yes, I just said, including provision of information about existing state law.
Oh, okay.
To the ordinance.
Thanks. Are we all clear on the motion? Mr. Dominguez?
I just want to say, I really appreciate the specificity the mayor and Mr. Hart put into this. I think this is really good moving forward. I think this really sets up ordinance committee to move this forward.
Thank you. Let's take a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Mayor Perterm Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That was unanimous vote?
And then, Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry.
If I could just, we didn't resolve the issue of staffing and prioritization of this as an item. Suggestion for tonight, right now, is that we do discuss this as part of both your budget work session and the joint meeting with Planning Commission, when you can see all the priorities in order, and give us further direction about how to pursue it, and we'll give it some thought as well now that we have the direction from it.
That's coming up real soon, so.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Okay. We're not quite done yet, folks, so leave quietly, please. Councilmember assignments, anything to report from going to events or going to your assignments, your liaison assignments? Mr. Friedman?
So on, last week, on January 25th, I attended the Central Coast Water Authority meeting, and the major items were that the Department of Water Resources is doing a 15% allocation of state water. So we heard today that's going up to 20% for the year. The other items are the governor is supposed to make a major announcement this week regarding the Cal Water Fix or the twin tunnels, so stay tuned for that. And then efforts to amend the state water contract between, are underway in order to provide more water management flexibility, specifically to include multi-year water transfers, which would allow agencies to transfer twin tunnels' costs and benefits. It's important to note that the state would like to focus on multi-year transfers issues in order to move the Cal Water Fix program forward, and there are other contract terms that we would like to see negotiated, so we can have more flexibility in water trading in drought years. And discussions between Central Coast Water Authority, the DWR, and the county regarding reassignment of the state water contract to CWA are still ongoing.
Thank you for that thorough report. I don't see any other lights, so I'll jump in. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, turned it on belatedly.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
I spoke with Chuck Flax of PATH, and we had organized last fall, when he was still a C3H, a series of meetings to deal with two things. One, the PATH winter shelter not taking place, only under inclement weather rather than the four-month contract we had in previous years. And then also, the rescue mission, closing some of its rooms because of reconstruction. And so we created this impromptu ad hoc task force, and they've done a great job of accommodating the clients who would have normally gone to PATH, and the neighbors have been happy that it hasn't seemed like it's had a negative impact on them, so it was a win-win. And we've got to figure out how to do that better for more seasons of the year, but it was a good result to hear from Mr. Flax.
Thanks. Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. So I attended the discussion at the library by Dr. Ed Keller on the debris flows in Montecito, and while I think people weren't quite ready for it to be a casual conversation, it was very, very informative, and I think it will direct a lot of our decisions in the future with permitting, especially in the county. But it was really valuable, and it's available on the library's website to see the slides and to discuss further. So that was a really fantastic presentation. I attended two events with you that I'm sure you'll talk about, but it was really fun, the Puppet Palooza, to see the John Pallmentary puppet unveiled, and your dialogue was really funny. And I think the community needed that. It was a very family-oriented event, and really, really well-received. I also attended a Planning Commission event last night at Loquita. It was a nice chance to talk with other staff members and other departments, and to support local business and hear about what more is happening there. And I've been attending the Coast Village Recovery Assistance Center, which their doors are open and open to the public, and it's a really nice place to either get official information or just come and talk to people, or just kind of reconvene as a community. So those are all, oh, and we both attended the ambassadors, Reading Ambassadors Awards, which was really, also a really fun event.
Yes, I'm all full of praise for our library. Mr. Casey, they livestreamed that discussion. It was a scientific look from the geology department about what happened in Montecito, and I think some people did find comfort in knowing what happened in terms of Mother Nature and science. So, and you're right, it's up for people to watch again. And the Reading Ambassadors program, in case you don't know, it's a collaboration of our library and the AOK After School program. So kids learn how to read out loud to their younger siblings, and it's a wonderful, I was so glad to see you there, it's a wonderful program. Our West Side Community Group did a cleanup on Sunday, got a lot of graffiti on the Annapoomoo Foot Bridge, and we're having a neighborhood meeting on February 26th, that's a Monday night, and we're having Anthony Wagner with our police department. He's the Santa Barbara Police Department Public Information Officer, and he will be giving an update on our noise ordinance and the commercial cannabis ordinance. And so everyone's welcome, even though it's hosted by the West Side Neighborhood Association. And Kids World reopened, and so here's some kudos for our Parks Department, and really well-loved and well-used Parks facility for children and adults. Madam Clerk, we have closed session items. Thank you. And Mr. Klon, let us know if we need to report out on one of them? Okay.
Closed sessions, item 13, conference with labor negotiator as described in Agenda item 13. Item 14, conference with city attorney, existing litigation as described in item 14. Item 15, conference with city attorney, anticipated litigation as described in Agenda item 15. And item 16, conference with city attorney, anticipated litigation as described in Agenda item 16.
Mr. Klon?
Madam Mayor, we may need to report out on the last item.
And since we may or may not have to, I'd like to close the meeting now in memory of Alan Gitterman, who passed away, I think, this very day. So blessings on him and his family. This meeting's not adjourned, we're going to close session.